Okay, folks, please join me in the budget.
My budget later to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican for which she says one day she under God, the business liberty and justice.
Okay, welcome everyone. This is the May fourteenth meeting of the town of Canada go planning. Board, a lot of new faces here this evening, so let me introduce you to the folks up front here. We have remotely our recording secretary, Kareen Hatch. The evening Kareen, we have our remote facilities coordinator in Burger. Tim Schneider alternate member is excused this evening. Active board member Mark Tolbert, active board member Scott Neil, active board member Amanda Van Laken, active board member Bob La Course, I'm Chuck Euler, chairperson. I have Kristen Smith, our zoning officer, it's Bray Van representing our engineering firm MRB. And absent right now, but soon to come back is our attorney, Chris Nadler. So we're going to proceed with the agendas published. If you didn't get one, you want one, there's one out front. I would ask that if you want to address the board, you come to the podium and give us your name and address. Procedurally, what we'll do is go through each application, we'll have a presentation by the applicant. And then the board will respond with any questions or comments that they may have. I will in each application solicit any information from people who are here that have questions regarding the application. Or someone who's joining us remotely. And once that has been concluded, the board will reconvene on the application and hopefully come up with a decision this evening. We have two exits to the left and right. Should we have an emergency? Please be aware of where they are and use them if need be. What else do I have to go? We have no public hearings, no new public hearings this evening. So there was no reason to have any legal notices published in the Daily Messenger, so there were none. And I will now go to the part of the agenda, which is privilege of the floor. That has to do with anybody in the audience who would like to address the board of the city regarding an application or something that is not our agenda. If you have an item you'd like to bring to our attention, now's the time to do it. Again, I ask you come to the podium, name and address and express your your comments. Anybody have privilege of the floor? Okay, I'm assuming everyone is here for a specific application on the agenda, so let's move right into those. The first one being a continued public hearing. CPN twenty four oh twenty four, Peter Brew, German Brothers Marina on North Street. Mr. Brew is requesting a special use permit for a commercial outdoor storage of boats and boat accessories. This is a continuation, so I will reopen the hearing. And I see Mr. Westbrook is here again this evening representing the app.
Good evening, good to be back. I think I want to walk you through and keep that back up that you have talked to. We have about eight items I want to respond to what you guys gave us last meeting. The first one is the site businesses. That's been moved on the map. I think it says like seven hundred ones a thousand foot. That's can you blow it up at all? Right at the bottom there. Quote it one more time, it's a thousand to the west and it's seven hundred to the east, okay? I want to stop there just for a second and let you know that Peter Brew and myself met with Tim Fletcher, Mike Murphy, and Kevin Laverne. When we start to talk about the floodplain, you know their activity. We haven't come to any conclusions, we think it's a long time, but at least we started that process with support from in the town. Thank that, thank them for that. The length and width of the entranceway is now currently marked at it's twelve feet wide and fifty something feet, forty sixty percent. And we have altered the setback. We came in last time to put it at a hundred feet when we then discussed landscaping, we felt we moved back to seventy five, which is the regulation. And our matches show that now. So we went from a hundred back to seventy five. The fourth one was a tough one to get, but we finally got it. I'll take the credit for it. There's a man in the back here that's responsible for the gas line easement is twenty three five. And you should all know that it's a, it doesn't have any gas in it, right? You know, so it's kind of a funny thing, right? It's a leftover.
There's a pipe with no gas or no pipe, no gas?
It's pipe with no gas, yeah, yeah. I don't know what that means either, Chuck, so. And then we're proposing eight evergreen trees, twenty five feet separated between them. Now, I want to talk about the site in particular around, let's go from the west to the east. We have a fairly wide easement there, forty foot for the town of Canada. We're not sure that we need to put any cover or any evergreen trees in that area. But and as you come from the west, you don't really see it until you get where the entrance kind of is. That's why we concentrated the trees on the on the east side of the north side, but on the east side of the where the entrances. The berm also hides things when you come up from it from the west. And we're just trying to minimize the trailer and the trail boat trailers exposure for the passing people that drive the road. Okay, so, you know, there's my statements there. I want to make sure that people understand what this represents. There's four hundred and fourteen point nine eight feet of frontage on the on the opportunity we have with this property. We've also modified. Any questions on those items?
No, go ahead.
Okay, so Peter and I went back and looked at some things. And so for the twelve month trail boat trailers. We are moving away from twenty five boat trailers, a total of ten boat trailers, and that's in these statement of operations. It's pretty clear there. It's towards the bottom, Chuck. And if there is anything else I missed, I'd like to address it. But I think I caught most of it. I'm not saying I caught all of it, but I caught most.
Greg, would you go over your statement of operations? It's somewhat confusing.
The revised one, the one from May third.
You had it in front of you.
You have it up here, yes, sir.
Okay. So how does the process work here?
Okay, so let's just pretend it's April first, okay? And at that time, we start to pull the boats and the trailers out of all the storage. Storage is in multiple areas. It's in Rochester. It's at the Ontario County Fairgrounds. We have other people that store it at home. We go get their boat for them. And so April first to June fifteen, we take that hundred and fifty customers boats, put them in the water at the marina on our ramp. And then we move those empty trailers back to that location out the north road. So the boats are delivered to the customers' private residence. There's a lot, there's a much more higher level of private residency serving than there is for the small number of slips we have at the marina currently. That's number one, okay?
Okay, good. Now that I know where the GBM winter storage facility, that was a question.
Yeah, they're all over the place, you know. Sure, this has had a record of having them all over the place.
Okay, you got boats in the water and now you got empty trailers. So you go into number two.
So what, once they're put in the water, we move that empty trailer to the property owned by thirty nine oh seven West Lake Road LLC North Street. The tax map number, we just move it there and place it into those one of two areas of the map. The front part of it is for trailers only, the back part is for trailers with boats on the trailer. Okay, there.
Okay.
The trailer will stay on North Street lot until September fifteenth ish. And from September fifteenth to December fifteenth, we are taking those trailers back to get them out of the water. And that that is a just like the springtime activity. This one's a little bit longer. People want to keep their boats longer, so it's just an extended period. Some people want to get out before Labor Day. So GBM will take the trailers from its North Street location and match up with the boat, its trailer. At GBM, they made it to thirty nine oh seven West Lake Road, the boat trailer, we return to GBM Winter Storage Facilities. Wherever they may lie, in Ontario County or Monroe County.
Great, could I stop? Just to validate and verify for me, he says they'll go back by December fifteenth. That's a hundred percent of the trailers.
It's a hundred percent of the trailers, you are correct.
Are off.
They're going right there. They have to be gone because they have to have a boat on top of them. They have to be in the storage, right, so. I think last year, I was pointing this out, there was one left, I think, out there, one or two. I don't know how that happened, but it's not going to continue to happen. That happened. So then talking about GBM will store an additional forty trailer boats on the north property currently at West Hill. Once then, the boats will recover with boat shrink wrap. This is right one.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, it's ten boats, okay, okay. So I'll check this, but I think the boats with the trailer, the trailers with boats on them is twenty five, not.
It was, that's why forty surprised me.
I don't think that's right. Okay, we can make that change today. And it's typically approximately ten boats, as we just said, to stay on land for twelve months in a year. Once a year, GBM will inspect it ten boats to make sure that the boats and trailers are properly secured to each other. And two, all boats are designed to retain their own fluids while on a body of water or on land. That's was the exact words from the other marina on the street. So we use those words, we thought those were adequate. And then I want to go into this special use permit. GBM is interested in requesting a multi-year special use permit. We'd also like to get the date started April first, just because it's like when you start your fiscal year, right? And our fiscal year really starts, they they hibernate all winter long, and they start to full pull them out. That's when our cycle really starts. So we would appreciate, in this case, that, you know, we would take it from where we got off this on December thirty first and move it up to April first for the next year, and then that would be fine by us if it's okay with you guys. We also identify that anytime that the current numbers of boat trailers go up or any buildings are constructed, we'd expect to apply for a new special use permit. I may make a comment around that sentences, sentences. So when we were in here, when I was in here last time, before Peter got here, you know, we have a lot of unknowns on the other side of this equation, right, at the marina itself. And as long as we have those, we can't predict the future, right? We hope we're going to have something here, I mean, at the lakeside, but until that happens, we don't, we can't, we're not going to predict the future. And as long as it does not impact by building, for the buildings up, you have to come in for a site plan anyways. Or if you want to commence as a result of, you know, other things that may be of concern for the board. And that's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
Okay.
Great, thank you for adding the comments related to the statement. Potential of fluid.
Mark, can you speak up a little bit?
I was just saying, thank you for adding the statement of operations for man leading for control on the statement of fluid, related to that. Paragraph H of section two twenty dash forty three, which refers to commercial outdoor storage of boats and accessories, does call to that the boats will be properly stored with minimal potential for contamination to site and fuel or other substances known to be hazardous, so on and so forth. This may include requiring storage to occur over a certain suitably improved or durable surface. Any intent to?
Not this year.
On your statement of operations, Greg, normally I see or we see hours of operation when you're going to access, when you're not going to access, times, stuff like that, and how many time to date you estimate?
So I think the answer was the best answer this way. That once the hundred and fifty are in, we're not going to go after those daily transactions at all. They're part, they're part, right? It's the twenty five that depends on what we get on the marina side. And if we get anything that we can put on site at the marina, so far, but there's no declaration of anything, right? But we just want to hold it at that twenty five at this.
You should have a statement of hours of operation though.
Hours of operations are sun up to sundown.
That's not on there, no, it's not.
That's it?
It's not on there. It's not in your statement.
I agree.
So I mean, it's not, like you come and go any time you want, and that shouldn't be there. On that.
I can just get that added. Thank you, thank you.
Remember, anything else?
Pine trees, excuse me, Greg, the eight, those are eight pine trees?
Yeah.
What, what are they?
Three foot, I'm agreeing, trees, I wonder, Charlie May, old days. And he says the best time to plant them is in the fall. And we'll probably follow that. And so.
You won't be doing this until fall?
That's it?
You won't be planting until fall?
That's what I would tell you, yes. That's a person who's in the nursery industry for many, many years.
I think Sutter, I think they were six foot evergreens. Who put in and I three, true, you got the berm.
Right.
And that that helps you as far as your your buffer. And then with the trees on top, that adds another vertical dimension. Like, I think we'd rather see something taller than a three foot tree, so if possibly a six foot evergreen, obviously year round has 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 buffering capacity to it. We have, I think, the board is going to grant relief from any type of buffering or fencing on the right and left side of your property because of the type of uses that are there. But we certainly, as we've expressed many times, requested some sort of offer in the front, and if you could provide a six foot evergreen is on top of that berm, I think that would suffice. As far as the easement. I know you're thinking about maybe this evergreen should be extended, but I'm not, that's part of the Auburn Trail, and I'm not sure. I hate to put trees in there and then have to take them out.
The only thing is on that, it's the low side of the property. And as you come around the corner, that is the lowest side of the berm further inside.
Well, the other thing, Greg, is I think with the, what you're requesting here in terms of the volume of activity, I think we're going to need a little more detail on your driveway access. That's that's kind of rough out there. I went out after the last meeting. And I guess it had a request that we had made about taking some trailers out. And there was mud all over County Route thirty, so we need some sort of tire scrubber or some sort of more stable driveway there. And I think now's the time to do that also. In fact, your original plan had a driveway detail.
Right.
Really good.
Yeah, and probably Anthony's here. You can put that detail back on because I think that essentially is what we're looking for. It's almost like a construction.
Yeah.
Access, yeah, it's ballast stone.
Markstone.
Yeah. Have you checked with the county at all regarding access or having that driveway there? I guess they started taking a position, existing driveways, so there's no further permitting made. They did, hopefully, they won't require any permits to improve it, so. How about it?
Okay. I'm going to go back to the six footers. Just for a second, what were, what?
Evergreens?
Yeah.
Six footers, yeah.
Is that?
Yeah, that's I, that's what we required from Sutter out of County Route ten, I think you required it from the mustaches.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
They had put some in. It's only industrial zoning, so it's comparable to
Okay.
to what you have only in a different location.
But when you're up on the second floor of the Y, you can't see the boat trailers.
That's true. Floodplain note, you discussed that, took care of it. I think it's still up in the air as to whether it's part of the floodplain, the new floodplain.
Right, I think as as I understand it still, it has not been officially mapped and discussed. Based on the code enforcement officer's comments, it suggested that the board consider if moving forward with an approval of the special use permit tonight, the condition be added that requires the applicant to renew the floodplain management agreement within each and every year. In theory, the thought is is by time this, by time he has to redo it next year, it's either going to be mapped or it's not. Therefore, they won't have to continuously pay on flood insurance if it's not mapped.
Okay, all the more reason to maybe consider a.
Mr. Murphy, we met him out there. He just came back from a full week somewhere in Maryland to be trained. I think it helped him.
It can be dangerous. It's loaded, loaded with knowledge. Which is all the more reason, I think, to consider just a one year renewal on this thing, or it's not renewal, it's a new, that's an actual new product. Is that sort of along the line, I think, the board's thinking?
Yeah.
You know, we get the, we get the landscaping, we get the driveway improvements.
I have one on the phone.
Well, think of, Bob, a second, the surface, you're putting the trailers on, that's just on grass. The surface, you're putting the trailers and the boats, that's on grass.
Grass also.
What did you just say, Greg?
Same thing.
Let's see.
Okay, going along with what Mark was saying, I I could see at some point you should consider some sort of impervious area out there for the boats and trailers. Anything that has boats themselves on it?
Yeah, I understand that. So we're still planning the, call it the shop.
Yep, yep, yep.
And so the shop is the primary thing we want to get at. Whether it's this year, next year, you have to, you have to.
That was my question, how far away is the shop?
It depends on what happens in the lakeside.
Well, that would alleviate a lot of things on the lakeside, though.
Right.
A lot of the traffic problems, parking, all this stuff, we don't need a lot of that. You're trying to do it.
It'll make a lot of things on here permanent.
Right, and at that time, it's very reasonable to request grab.
Okay. Well, how's the board feel about?
I have two more comments.
Oh, sure.
Please. Um, when I went, I went through the property a couple of times. After the last meeting, we.
You want to buy it, my chance? You want to buy it, no?
I wouldn't eat it. You see my truck, it's a mess out. Yeah. Two things.
Please.
Their survey lines are on there, and half the trailers are over the survey line on the other property.
I can hear the man in the back here.
Okay, that's one. Two. Before I would say yes to this, I would say that you need to have a mowing plan. It needs to be mowed, look nice, and it has to have a maintenance plan with that and a maintenance plan with the trees. Because we've seen so many trees go in and they die. And then, well, we put them in. So that and I'm just assuming they're all registered and inspected trailers are all.
That's correct. They can't go in there unless they are.
Okay.
Your first question again was around the.
The survey line, it's over the trailer.
What, as we did last year, we had the corners, when the, you know, key corners.
Yeah.
And we pulled that twenty feet off to give ourselves a buffer with the neighbor to the east. And so smaller stakes. If you want it to be staked out to your property line, we can do that. But those those are holding, that smaller stake is already twenty feet off of the property.
Yeah, they're so faded, I don't know if they're.
Those were, there was property line sticks, and then there was, there was offsets to the original mow.
Yeah, those might have been the ones that were on the ground.
They're, they don't represent what's planned here.
If you mow, I would mow you.
We know how to mow, we got it.
Okay, that area that you're going to have to put it in, like your trailers in that area.
Your operator tractor, Bob.
Pardon?
Your operator tractor.
Yeah.
Okay, there you go. Pretty good, okay? We agree with you on the mowing, by the way.
Yeah, that was the mowing would make it look a lot better.
Yeah, it'll clean it up.
Yeah, make it look like it should not just.
Be a field.
Yeah.
Very interesting, though, when you look at this property, the one to the west is I don't know how many feet of County Road thirty. And the one to the east is just purchased by Farnsworth. And it says in some of the reading I did, is that when you're adding all just fields, you know? So we're going to do what we were asked to do.
Yeah.
But, you know, there's a I don't know how long those guys, when they come into the property, they'll.
Yeah.
Right.
Oh.
Yeah, so it's the activity on the property that drives the behavior.
Yeah, we can only take care of you right now. One at a time. Those are the biggest things I said. The mowing, maintenance plan, make sure everything is legal registered vehicles.
You make sure.
Can't go on the road.
Yeah, make sure we get conditions.
For that, yeah.
I just want to clarify, Bob's saying make sure everything on the site at all times legally registered.
I just want to confirm that it was.
Well, and I'm just pointing out the disparity here. Greg says they can't go on the road, but some of them aren't going on the road.
For six months.
For six months. Are you, do you want them still registered during that?
I'm just saying, I mean, if they're sitting in a grassy field, I don't know if the New York State says it has to be registered. Mine is, my trailer is.
I think what's important is that code states that all boats and boat accessories are being stored on the site, showing good working condition. And that's the.
Bingo, because that's the inspection part of it, too. Yeah, trailers have to be inspected, too.
But also, but what Mark just said prevents it from becoming a junkyard for all.
Right, right.
Okay, I will go to anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board regarding this application.
Yes.
For the trailer and boat trailer storage on North Street. If not. Let's see if we can, Lance, whenever you're ready. Get a list of items that we want to make sure gets gets into the record.
Okay.
The landscaping out front will be six foot evergreens. Is it a twenty five foot? Okay, twenty five foot spacing replaced on top of the berm. To the east of the east of the access point. I note the, you said the owner of the property to the east. Farnsworth, just support that, Mark. Okay, it should be labeled on the plan. You have the town, you have the town property on the west side.
Yeah, but the maps have to come out of the comment, right? So until we see that.
Was it recent by, right?
What's that?
Was it recent by?
It's a recent by.
Yeah, I thought it was recent.
Well, whatever the owner record is.
On the official map for the county, then we can do it.
Put that on here. And Anthony, the the back lot meets and bounds is missing. For the back, the back property line, the top of the, the top of the property.
Yes, it's just due to a scaling issue with the size and going way out, I can I can give you the overall subdivision map that was done.
Okay. Can you put the meets and bounds of the northern property line?
It'll be on the full survey map. That should be the blow up section where everything's to be done. I can give you kind of like the actual subdivision map that's filed.
The driveway detail should be placed on the plan.
Is it a detail or a stabilized construction?
Right, is a detail based on our.
Yeah, it's a certain number stone, it's not going to be a crusher run, too.
Within so far.
Bigger than that. I I think they used the New York State DC stabilized construction entry detail. That's the width and the length on which I think you guys are talking about.
Yeah.
And it will eliminate the dirt from running.
Yeah, it's pretty close to our construction.
We follow the New York State.
Okay, on our site, site design.
I just wanted to stay with construction entry detail as per New York State.
Okay, surface trailer, surface. Okay, let's get into your concerns.
The maintenance.
Yeah, maintenance plan.
Yeah, maintenance plan to include mowing the lawn.
Would you, would you accept a spring and fall? Cut?
I don't. I mow my lawn every week. Uh, I would want it to be, um, not look like a junkyard.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, but when we had the boats part, with the trailers part there, you know, there are, some of those grow up, right? So what we've done in the past, last year, for instance, we, uh, cut it in, uh, April. Okay.
I would suggest cutting it now, putting the trailers away and then put it back, all lying them up nicely again. But, um, I don't know, I can't say on code how long grass should be before you do it, but just so it doesn't look like a junkyard.
Well.
I don't know.
Yes, I don't know.
It's very subjective, right?
Is it subject to the property maintenance code? It says you can't address, no, because it's not residential.
Yeah. Um.
Well, make up, I think, I think twice a year is lighted. But we'll have it subject to approval of the chair and the town engineer.
Yeah.
That's.
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement, yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe call Mer.
They usually take care of.
Mr. Murphy told me he has two hundred problems he has to deal with.
He needs help.
Yeah.
Don't make any more talk.
Um, Bob, to cover that condition, I I have a maintenance plan to be provided covering the site, the mowing of the site and the tree.
Tree maintenance.
And then I can specify, um, the maintenance plan is to be renewed and approved by the co, town code enforcement office.
Yeah, sounds good.
The statement of operations, uh, be amended to include the hours of delivery.
Right.
For no. Of trailers, delivery or pickup.
Or dates number four.
Yeah.
Was that?
Statement of operation to include hours of.
Hours of delivery and pickup of trips.
Hours of delivery.
And the amended number four to reflect the correct number of trailer slash boats.
Twenty-five.
Yeah.
We all agree on twenty-five.
Statement of operations to identify the correct number of trailer boats, I can use the words that we're using.
Lance, anything have to be added regarding the floodplain, or is that certain, you taking care of?
We were, we were asked by Mike Murphy to put a certain.
Station on.
They've got a new name.
Yeah.
Oh, I know.
What I, what I had suggested is the two comments that are in the findings, the added as conditions for this special use permit. Under number eight in the findings, second bullet, yup, says there it's recommended that a flood development permit uh, be issued by the flood administrator prior to the special use permit from the issue. That would be one of the conditions. And the second one is, as we were discussed earlier, that it's recommended that the special use permit, that, excuse me, the special use permit be issued for this application. Um, the condition, um, the applicant applying, um, next year for renewal of this question, or excuse me, of the flood management permit with the administrator. That it it that, that has to be reviewed yearly, I think is the words that they've asked, that CEO asked for. With understanding that, our understanding of that would be.
Well, this time next year, it'll be fine. I understand.
I think, if I understood.
Once it's for next year, it's set.
Yeah.
Right?
That's what I think, so I think it only has to be renewed next year.
Make sure it says that, I can change that.
As long as.
Okay. And next year, the period be, I I mean, we're eventually gonna get to, what's, what's gonna be the period of this special?
I discussed with attorney, but I I think if we just date it one year for today, it covers the.
Second, are you good with that?
It's fine. You know, that way the changing over occurs, so the board was open to it, we dated to May fourteenth.
That's as good as any, I mean, yeah, I know you had mentioned April first as being the start-up, but I that's that's your date.
So then.
Our date is tonight.
Yes, let's say May, whatever, fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, there are sixty trailers slash boats, then it's not in conjunction with the statement of operations, so that if next year, you know, as you're starting up and you're planning on.
Permit, I changed the numbers around facilities.
Or change, any sort of changes, I just pick on that one, because it's an easy number to pick at.
And we'll, we'll have a track history of how it's going out there in terms of any issues, if we have issues, then we can bring them up at that renewal, which is what we did this year, we had a couple of things that we wanted to discuss with you, and I think we've corrected those with this, uh, this continuation. Um, Mark, anything you want in there specific regarding conditions here on the special use permit, uh, related to some of your concerns?
Yeah, I'm not involved with the idea of the boats being there for the potential risk of damage. Uh, questions whether or not the inspections are along, you know, working condition that shouldn't bother. Are not looking staffs and.
When their most special use permits, the code enforcement department, when they get this line, uh, does go out do inspections, uh, in the code.
Yeah.
So assuming, you know, assuming they're gonna. Code, code makes an un- unannounced visit, checks to see if the boats are.
He doesn't have time to even react to.
Well, he might surprise you.
Okay.
One thing that I would notice, people, someone code related to adjacent vacant lots uh, to areas, and I think it falls into uptime as well, so there's a, typically we ask that there, that there's a thirty-foot zone that was kept. Manicured, I guess is the word that I'll use, and then after that, it's ten inches. So if it's.
Long.
So.
Manicured up to ten inches.
Awesome, weed control of ten inches, and then manicured with the first thirty foot. And that's to keep, uh, visibility for masses.
That's something that Mike could handle, recording more here. That's great.
Okay, move along. Uh, anything else we want included, uh, that plan, we talked about the driveway, we talked about the floodplain, talked about maintenance. Are we concerned about when trees go in?
Their plans fall, correct?
Yeah.
For the trees. Not planting the trees until fall.
It's worth usually. I'm similar applications or lakefront properties where the board requires surety or surety sometimes to be posted to cover the cost of like erosion, sudden patrol, you have on some commercial properties requiring the same type of surety for landscaping. Um, obviously, that's an option to consider if that's some report left up. To help securely guarantee that the landscaping would be established.
I mean, I understand the reason for planting fall, but the work is already out of the barn, if it falls, the boats are coming out, and, you know, you have an empty lot with twenty-five boats, you know?
I know, Mike, I I would just say would have been in your maintenance plan, fix it, make it go back. I planted trees the other day in my house.
I just follow Charlie's.
I understand, yeah.
Well.
I spent a whole year without trees up there.
There's a lot of trees going in.
Why don't we tell, uh, tell Charlie that we've left the trees now?
Yeah.
Charlie's out of business now. Okay, about business. He only says sells trees in the fall.
Oh.
I did find thirty-one Christmas.
Another chart. All right, we went to trees now, I guess.
Yeah.
Yep.
Went to trees now.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
So five, would you like, I think making that a spe- a special use permit condition, tree replanted.
Now?
Yeah, before it gets too hot, I mean, I can see summertime. I'd say next month.
Days, Friday to June fifteenth.
Friday to.
Yeah, I would say the same thing with the, um, driveway, the driveway also.
Yeah, driveway will be done.
Yeah, okay, so sooner the better, all that.
Thirty days. So the thirty days.
Thirty days, June fifteenth. Okay, now do we have everything?
I've read them all. Greg, just something to think about as you. So when and if this comes back for future development, call, they'll state that any property that is trailer, just supposed to be the mine or next to you. So a nice large building.
I learned a new word this past month, and that is, um, what's it called? A showing area or a demonstration area, okay? And boats are on ten, there's a golf cart with some boats attached to it. He's a really nice gentleman, I can't remember his full name, but it's on the building. Anyways, those are ten feet off the right away. It's a display area.
Yeah.
And I don't understand how that runs that way, we're not here to talk about others here, but, you know, we want to know those rules upfront, so we can, you know.
Okay. Uh, we're ready to move on. We've got a.
Did you buy a golf cart? Sounds like you just bought yourself a golf cart.
We've got a seeker enlisted to do first, right?
Right.
That should be harmless. Uh, so we'll make a motion regarding this secret.
So to do open and close the public hearing?
Uh, I opened it, I didn't close it.
You asked if anybody wanted to.
I did ask.
Yeah, just.
Yep. I will officially close the public hearing, so we can go on to deliberations of the, uh, resolutions, first one being the seeker unlisted action. I will make a motion to, uh, approve a resolution for a seeker approval for, as an unlisted action of this reference property, uh, subject to the part once submitted by the applicant, and parts two and three submitted by town through its engineer. So I will make that motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
And motion for discussions on the seeker, all favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, let's move on to, uh, order being site plan first. Site plan, then that's special use, right?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we got a site plan. Uh, that's prepared by Venetia. I can't see the last revision date.
I have, um, the last revision date listed as March thirty, twenty twenty-four. I'm saying twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. It's March twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. It's in here, um.
No, that's not.
March twenty-third.
He did the work in April. Or or late early May.
Yeah, yeah, after the last meeting.
I'll make it reference day.
Yeah.
At least reflect that one, it says March twenty-third, okay, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, so we got a site plan. Uh, and then a subject to, let's, so give it a shot, Lance, for love.
Um, one is the standard hundred and eighty days, get the plan signed, we just addition to approval. The second one is, is the special use permit requirement, section two twenty dash forty-three G, which requires an enclosure, so here I'm just referencing that that's a requirement, but the town planning board, as part of that process, is agreed upon, the trees as proposed, or as shown, the landscaping as shown, um, the plans to be provided, but in a planting height of six foot. Is that correct? So that would take care of condition two. Third one, third condition, uh, any request for renewal of the special use permit, or request for new special use permit, or required a new site. That was a stand, that was the condition you just had on the last, but I need both of them considered again or not. It's already a requirement of special use permit. I don't know if you need to have it or not.
I don't think you do, because it's gonna gonna have to be redone anyway. It's only good for you.
Right, so can we straighten that?
I think.
Please.
All right, so then the four, five, and six, I believe, have all been addressed with revised plans that had been provided by the applicant. So then we're only doing the new ones, so the third one then would be the plans are to be updated to provide the stabilized construction entrance and provided detail. Uh, number four, then it was mentioned the meets and bounds are to be added to the site plans for the properties, is that correct?
On the northern property.
Um, the meets and bounds on the northern property. And to be provided with the plans. Trees or that's those are the second. Land. I get aware assets. To remove um, no other site and business offices. And that should be fifty thousand. Correct, I made that change on the other one, I'm sorry.
Uh, the label for the property owner to the east side is that site plan. In the.
Sorry, say that again?
The, um, property owner to the east side, adding that, is that site plan?
I missed that one, I'm sorry. That's right, so you want the neighboring carpings to be labeled?
Yes.
Anything else on the slate plan resolution? If not, someone give me a motion, can we first go over?
I want to go. I want to make sure that the.
They're caught, everything's.
The other ones are caught on the other.
So for the. So let's hold the slate plan.
For the special use permit, number one, revised to reflect May fourteen point twenty-five as being the term and state for the special use permit. So it's a one-year permit that expires on May fourteen, twenty twenty-five. Number two is the standard, uh, special use permit that identifies the town code enforcement officer, I know, zoning officer compliance. Number three is the town code section two twenty dash forty-three G. Again, it's just referencing what the requirement is, and then to meet that requirement, the applicant has proposed a landscaping plan to which the planning board requiring six foot tall trees and plant to be provided on top of the.
Do we, the planting scheduled by June?
I have that as a separate.
Okay, thank you.
So then that's one, two, three, four, and five were the code enforcement officers' conditions, which are in regards to the flood plain management permit. One is it's required to be provided prior to the issuance or beginning operation, and the second one is it needs to be renewed next year.
Okay.
Number six, the statement of operations is to be updated to identify twenty-five trailer boats, as discussed in the planning board meeting. Are we good with saying twenty-five trailers boats?
I think we all agree, that's the number, boats and trailers.
All right, number seven, a statement of operations, again, to be updated to reflect the hours of deliveries and pickups, it's a spread for the project. Number eight, this is the combination of the maintenance plan and schedule to be provided that identifies often this, the plan, the site will be mowed and maintained, and the trees to be maintained, and that is subject to a review and approval by the code enforcement. Good, good, it's eight, number nine, um, this is section two twenty dash forty-three A, which is, I think, Mark, what you're alluding, that the boats and trailers should be stored on site and good working board. I think there's language specific in the code that I would reflect there, but that's just a one that that condition would be.
It'd be adhered to. Complied with.
And then number ten was that all trees are to be planted by June fifteenth, as shown on the landscaping.
Shut down.
The end of day. Gotcha.
Does that include the driveway to be?
They not put the driveway on that king, you want, you want to stabilize the construction entrance obstacles to be installed by that day?
Yeah.
But when you're priced out of crushed concrete.
I have.
It's like sixty percent of crusher two.
Yeah. Okay.
Over the ten, yeah.
Special use some. You got anything, folks? All righty. Well, we're not done yet, we got a boat on. We go, we put it down. Getting ready to throw a tight today. Getting ready to throw a tight today. Uh, all right, you want to do site plan?
Again, with the one, two, I have three, four, five.
I'll make the site plan looking, uh, with five positions for keeping on the central rail, it's a little more organized.
I'll make the site plan motion, uh, but five positions for keeping on the central way to the middle or north country. Uh, but this is the site plan of the world five.
I'll second.
So just a question on that.
Excuse me, I get a motion, Greg, I get it.
Sorry, Mike.
Uh, let's go through the discussion. Done, all favor?
Hi.
Hi. Good question.
The question is, can? Or someone's here to help to get this all. I've got my notes. I have a head, but sometimes I.
I draft these up and I send them to the town as a draft tomorrow, I most certainly.
See my frontiers. You'll be the unofficial. It's something we all agree to.
Okay, that's site plan, let's do, uh. Special use.
I'll do, I'll do special use, uh, approval. Resolution at two two zero dash twenty six, thirty five, and forty three. At on North Street. Uh, for a one year. Um, approval with the now ten conditions.
Eleven?
I have ten, I combined trees and the construction entrance to be installed by June fifteen. We know to be added to the plans.
Okay.
Second, that.
Motion a second for discussion. Not all favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Good to go.
Thank you. Would you rather rush the review?
Okay, thank you. Alright, next item on the agenda is. When it's been around a while. Evan Gilbert. Twenty six, twenty five, Route twenty two, sir. Uh. Evan, that's the property out there, he's reflecting final site plan approval. And he's saying, thank God it's final. Site plan approval for the construction of two new commercial indoor sports facilities. Uh, that have now been reduced to twelve thousand four hundred square foot each. Associates parking, wastewater treatment system. Storeyard management facility on a four point eight acre lot in the. Newly developed next. Next to you, so we're like zoning district that was created by the town board in the last couple of months. So, uh, you got your, uh, zoning?
Yep.
And you're back to see us to get final site plan?
Yes.
And anything new you wanna tell us about the project that you did reduce the size of the building?
Yeah, slightly reduced.
It was, um, fire code. So we reduced it to redo, to reduce those sprinkler requirements. Um, so we received a letter from MRB. Uh, the end, I think it was excellent, you asked last year, uh, we just responded to it. Um, we have no issues with the comments that MRB provided. Uh, there was not, other than the building size changes, there was not a lot of changes to the plans.
Actually, I saw one change.
Go ahead, yeah.
There's a proposed driveway that wasn't on any of the other versions to the right there.
So more access, east to, so they could maintain it.
So that was not on the original plans.
Yeah.
Is that gonna happen then?
Mm hmm.
Is that, how much, does that include increase your cycle or coverage?
Uh, I believe it's a stabilized turf, so.
It's a sub surface.
Yes.
That's what it is.
Yep.
That's new. And one other question about your statement of operations, which is really. Actually, how I like to see him, boom, boom, really good.
Yep.
But it said employees zero.
Correct.
So no employees.
No.
No one's gonna open the doors or?
Yeah, no, the intent of it is to have something where you could go online, you could reserve space, get a code or.
Self help.
Code and then basically it's self service access.
Are there like restrooms planned or like?
Your buttons are.
Just someone will.
Oh, we have people come in and check on it.
Someone will be like.
Yeah.
I'm thinking like, what's the bare minimum employee? Someone's gotta refill the toilet paper roll. Yeah.
Yeah, but that doesn't count. I believe in the building code towards or that in the integral code towards. Employees, it's saying employees part of the purpose.
Right.
And like most commercial spaces have a, you know, kind of a contractor. When their. General.
Got it.
So it doesn't technically count.
Okay.
Now, if that person cleans the toilets and then sits there taking tickets, we're gonna have a problem.
Right, yeah. Uh, no, no intention of.
I noticed that the easement is on there from the town, also sidewalk in the future, that's perfect. When you call the night?
Um, the number of accessible parking spaces. Is that six there?
Yes.
Okay, I think the statement of operations says three.
Uh, there was a late change that came up with. Yeah, it was a late change after the statement was produced, uh, and that came up with the MRB's review.
Okay.
You got your ship's own no impact letter, right?
It's correct.
Yeah. Uh. Was the preliminary plans signed? Was the preliminary plan signed or doesn't it have to be signed?
But well. Uh, you guys can talk about M U O. I consider it a single stage. Right, you had a preliminary to, to, to produce the.
Yeah, it's sort of the M U O process, not really a.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so essentially we'll wind up with a final site plan. Uh, that'll eventually be signed and. Endorsed, yeah, okay. Look for the referrals required. The only other thing that I noticed, it looks like we added a dumpster pad that's set.
Um, easement is. Yeah, it'd be considered accessory structure. Has a lots of stuff back on the principal buildings.
Is there any screening?
So it has an enclosure around it, and there's a detail.
So there's two sets of plans, so it's actually the one that the most prominent that I see on here just labels it, but it don't.
It's good, says dumpster enclosure.
You're saying, Mark, you're saying you don't see the detail? Yeah, I just didn't, it's. Looking at the five nine two four ones.
Yeah.
From last week. The details there, that's fine, that's all.
Yeah, it's, it's on C five oh two, it's a details, detail eleven.
We have the detail on our site. How you make out of your subject system as far as getting approved? To that.
Um, yeah.
Hope you're, said the Tyler or D O H?
It's, uh, it's out of the watershed, so it's D O H.
D O H. But so you say, yeah, 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 you got it or yeah?
Yeah, it's under review. Nothing ever happens fast in D O H.
We got as a condition.
Correct.
It's been approved before building purposeful. Okay, uh. With the landscape, uh. If I may burden you for one more, whatever, scroll down the landscape plan. It's a little slow, so. Uh, you, you were good enough to put a couple deciduous trees out front to sort of break up the side of that first building. If you can maybe stick one more. Uh, to the south of the waterline. I think that was sort of, so you'd have essentially four trees across the frontage, then you've got your trees going along the, uh.
Between the waterline and the ground.
Yeah.
Wasn't taking that one from the back and put him. And is that needed down there?
So, yeah, if I could get, uh, one additional tree of similar, similar species and size.
I, I like what Scott said or Mark said, uh, um, maybe we could move one up from the back, keep the same counts, we'll just move one around. Keep the prices, keep the.
That's fine. Just, it's, that's more, give me a tree up front.
There you go.
Okay. Those two pans, you decide the buildings there, what, the air conditioner compressor? Uh, the two little five by five pans, I think they've got added.
Egress, egress, you're required to have a concrete pad at egress store.
Okay, that's a man door.
Yeah.
Oh.
It'll be just, uh, immersed egress only.
Okay, your main entrance is all the. Okay. Anybody have anything else? Is anyone in the audience? Yes, ma'am. Step up, is it? Get your name.
Um, just we have the property, um. It's forty, there's a forty two acres. Here. I'm going to, and a huge area back here, so. Looks really good to me, but I do have a couple questions. I want to know the height of the building and the roof pitch and the color of the plant. Put siding, it's not siding. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, the height, the sidewall height and whether on that north and. East sides, whether there's anything other openings other than those managers.
The height of the eve.
Is that the sidewall or?
The side.
And what's the roof pitch?
I have the roof pitch, uh.
Is it, it's a gay wall roof?
Yeah.
And the pit in the, the peak is facing which way? Facing on both of them? They're, so they look identical?
Yes.
Okay, straight.
And we all.
And ma'am, the town has a weight requirement that can't be higher than certain height, so as long as he's in. I mean, he certainly tell you what it's gonna be, but I mean, it won't be any higher than what we allow under our.
Max on building height for this under the new law, the zoning. Local laws would be thirty five to be maximum.
And you're saying twenty five?
I think it's thirty three, probably the eve is thirty.
Okay, to the eve.
Alright.
Looking, so, um, to the eve. Okay. Say that's your question on that, ma'am?
Yeah, you know, the.
And, uh, we didn't get your name and address, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, it's Chris Nielsen Key and we live at forty four thirty county one four. Yeah, um, so I, what, do you have colors? Could we talk with you about that for facing, we have an organic farm, so I mean, like bright blue would be, it just wouldn't look nice. For us, it would be disturbing to our, your use, so if we could maybe talk about some what faces out, instead it just blends with the landscape nicely? Okay, yeah, yeah, that'd be great. Um.
Oh, yeah, we. What times the light outside?
Oh, lady.
What security lights?
I own twenty six fifteen, the lot right neighboring that.
And your name.
It'll live you key.
Okay, Olivia, yeah.
Um, but yeah, so.
Mother daughter.
Yeah, we.
Yeah.
Right around, but, uh, uh, yeah, so I guess light pollution was just one of our concerns, just.
Yeah, I was saying, Evan, uh, you have, uh, you have laid building lights, right, on the building, but.
There's a lighting.
Uh, there's a lighting plan, that's right. Downward lighting.
The greater code is what it was.
You know what you keep this? Redden, what's up, Peter, that?
I think you're gonna go down.
That.
Yeah, a little.
Is there anything on the north side or the east side? Or is this, or is this a security line just facing the parking?
I think it's a parking lot on narrow leave, uh, soon as we get, soon as we get to the lighting plan, we can show you the what a metric.
So once you have the landscape.
There you go. Again, that's your lights. Lighting is to provide it as detailed.
There you go.
So, so the town has a requirement that light can't trespass the property. With a certain foot handle. This doesn't show any light trespassing the property line. The other requirement is that all lighting has to be full cutoff and downward casting.
Right.
So it can't be open bolt that would go outward.
Okay, yeah, that.
Those are compliant.
Yeah, it just, it's like at night, it's like when Eagle Gymnastics put that huge light back there, it was like it destroyed our, our nighttime, it was just wasn't relaxing.
There is security.
The horses were bothered.
For doors that has to be compliant to building code and safety code requirements, but. All of the, the items associated with the site are intended to be fully compliant with the town.
Okay.
The cut sheet of the lamp is up in the upper radius.
So the light poles just to be cleared here, 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 here.
Okay.
And then the rest of them looks like they're building.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, are concerned with when Eagle Gymnastics, they put in the rear of the building up, right in the peak, they put a light. Kind of outward, so that would.
No additional lighting other than what's shown on this plan.
There you go, ma'am.
Up in the upper radius.
Yeah, yeah, that's great, yeah.
Okay, but yeah, that was. I think that was.
I imagine they're, uh, LEDs.
Listen. Can they be warm LEDs rather than like the ultra bright light? It's much more relaxing, so.
Yeah, I guess our, yeah, our concern is just the light pollution.
Sure, I, I.
Becoming more populated all the time, so.
You're sort of out there in the, the dark right now, but. I think, uh, there, there's nothing to the rear, uh, that, that's a so much retention base in the back, so.
Yeah.
That's to control the runoff, so there's no additional runoff of the site, so I think. I think we, uh, the applicant has pretty well handled.
And then my other concern being that my property is neighboring and we share that. On that drainage, uh, that ditch, uh, that runs through. It's just that they have a drainage plan that wouldn't create any erosion. Or flooding on, and why?
It does sometimes flood almost all the way up to level with land by both sides, and it pitches down about ten feet.
Yeah, so obviously the roof, that's because it created a lot of water.
Well, under the store owner management design shown here, and, you know, reviewed by our engineer, approved by our engineer. There would be no increase in runoff as a result of the impermeas that they're creating. Uh, it can't control what's upstream and already running.
No, no.
But it, it won't be any worse.
Okay, alright.
In fact, it might improve.
It'll get a little better probably, right?
Yeah, usually it, there's an overcompensation. Still more.
Well, that's good, yeah, that was, those are our concerns, thank you very much, yeah.
Thank you, thank you for coming out. It's precious. Appreciate your comments, all right, uh. Where was I was asking for? Anybody else have any? Thing to add regarding comments, questions on this application?
Uh, that's. Because of the changes, this was presented to the town board in accordance with the local law, section four of the local law. If, in the opinion of the town board, the project changes significantly. Uh, then the requirements shall be deployed and all voluntary requirements referred back to AR one. The town board did not make such, did not render such an opinion. I labor today.
The changes weren't substantial.
Were within. Were within the realm of the local law that they passed granting the mixed use overlay.
Give the data when? When that, uh, M U O was.
Yeah.
Originally.
Oh, no, uh, hang on, I did. About this. I, yes.
Yeah, it was, it was confirmed last month, but as far as the original. Yeah, I think we passed the preliminary back in October. I think it was.
You did your preliminary seeker in December twelve twenty three. That's from the seeker and, uh, preliminary approval.
Okay, just, you know, like I. Mentioned to you before. Yeah, it's in the findings.
I have.
Yeah, this was actually, uh, was local law number three of twenty twenty four. And it was passed on February twenty sixth, twenty twenty four.
February twenty sixth.
It's adopted. February twenty sixth of this year.
Okay. We got all the blanks filled in. So, uh, because we took care of seeker at the preliminary, we don't have to. To seeker, so we're on to. The, uh, resolution for the final site plan approval. Uh. Do we, can we confirm that all conditions? That were, uh, assessed as part of the preliminary, have been met?
Uh, let's stand. Add a condition.
Okay.
Just as a check off.
Well, I know the landscaping plan was on, there were some things that have shown up here.
Based on what was provided, I would say yes, but. Just that we didn't have to sign them, some of their plans. These are, yeah, catch all.
Alright. Uh, board, ready to move forward?
Yep.
Okay, uh. Someone want to take a look at and can be a resolution on the, or a motion on the site plan?
I will look up. Site plan for CPN twenty three hundred net. Where's? Twenty six, twenty five, no.
Twenty six, twenty five.
Yeah.
So twenty county.
Yeah.
For planning overall section. With how many conditions?
Alright, so. As written. I think number six can be removed. Project town planning development, there already are. Project town planning development, they already are compliant with the stormwater, if their intentions are gonna apply for an O I. I don't think number six needs to be there. You ask the one more standard at that point. Going on to the second sheet, so six, seven will become six. Eight will become seven, those two. Uh, so number six was the town candidate with stormwater access easement, stormwater maintenance agreement. Is required to be forwarded to the town attorney, town engineer for review and approval, prior to signatures, that's a requirement of the town. And then we said, number seven, all easements and boundary descriptions are to be submitted to the town attorney and town engineer for review. And approval prior to signatures. That's again, requirement. And then. New number eight, which we added. This was the landscaping plan, this is the updated, provided additional tree for a total of four, along county road point, uh, county road point. Excuse me, county road twenty two between the driveway and water service. Number nine, all preliminary conditions of approval are to be addressed prior to signatures. Those were the, and then ten. Um, assured for your consideration, you want to require. Being that they're doing stormwater, it would be my recommendation that, uh, sure to be provided to cover the cost of erosion, summit control and stormwater, as we have done in other commercial type projects.
I would agree with the, uh, neighbors' concerns with that. Just to verify, get it done right.
So.
We have ten conditions.
Um, the, I just want to touch based on that D O H permitting, the septic system prior to building permit. Only it asks us to make that prior to certain certificate of vacuum C V's, I can't control the state and they say it takes six to twelve months to complete the review. It is an approvable system, it is, it meets all the criteria of seventy five A. I just, I'm not, I'm at the mercy of the state for the review.
Worse came the worst, you would have a building bill.
Without a subject.
Without something.
But, there's a.
Can't get.
Yeah, they can't get a C of.
C of.
Yep.
Yep, okay.
So that was number five.
And you can, whereas the building size is correct, go forward.
Yeah.
And also the, uh.
Say that again?
Twelve four is the size.
Four four.
And the, uh, zoning. We change that to multiple or? It's an A R one right now. Cause it just got zoning changed.
Yeah, I have to have awareness to end all, then keep. Correct.
And I think the plan date revised.
The May ninth.
May ninth, okay. Uh, I guess, man, any other question is, some of the concerns that came up with Fletcher, the county. Public works back on the preliminary. Uh, I, I knew, you need a county highway firm for the, uh, the new access. Uh, Fletcher had some questions about the porch. Quarter main will be, needs to be sleeved, I mean, is that all covered under the preliminary? Okay, so that would.
And that was.
Continue with.
Mission number nine.
Okay. Well, you know, you gotta do that. Okay. I'll segment that though. Thank you. Motion second, further discussion, all in favor?
Hi.
Alright. Okay, finally.
Play ball.
We've been waiting a long time to say that.
Okay, thanks folks for coming out.
Thanks.
Alright, moving right along. At our snail's pace. Uh, this will be a quickie, uh, we have C P N twenty three one twenty six. Well, should be. Uh, Pittsburgh County, uh, candidate country estates. Five 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 thirty road. Uh, eventually they want to develop a hundred and thirty five new manufactured home sites. On their property with social improvements, uh, overview and tonight we're here to, uh. Uh, declare. Us being the lead agency on the seeker, current tenants, tenants. So, uh, folks, uh, certainly have a floor if you'd like to say something regarding the application.
Yeah, I, I think this is really just a formality.
Yeah, it is, that's why I said.
You guys. Intent to be lead agency, if you would like an overview if, if folks.
I'll tell you what, we, we got a. Get a pretty full agenda.
I understand.
Uh. I think we just like to move on with.
Sure.
Said this thing, and I think we're looking at thirty days out. Uh, to have the, uh. Uh, declaration. Become effective, and then we can act on the, both the seeker and the, and the site plan, so. That's, that's okay with you, that's way, sort of like it's received. So, uh, Lance, if you want to give us an overview one more time, I know we've gone through this before.
Sure. So, being that this is a type one action on your seeker. Um, the board tonight would be declaring their intent to be identified as the lead agency for completion of the environmental director for this application. Um, in doing so, the next step would be on behalf of the town, M R B group was back. The materials submitted as part of the application with a letter identifying the board's intent. And identified to all identified involved in interested agencies associated with the project, involve being those who have to grant. Either approval or permit associated with the project, and then interested those who may be interested in hearing or getting more information on such project. I provided those, let's see you as part of the compact. It would also include the completed E A F part one, and then that will be submitted, we go through a thirty day review. Uh, we try to get him out the next day, but the likeliness is that it won't be there too, and then it'll be day one, we'll start thereafter. The intent is that the thirty days will terminate prior to your second meeting in June. Uh, and therefore your second meeting in June would be the first time this will be to take action on seeker. Assuming you've received enough information to assist in that review and you're ready to make a determination at that one time.
So I will go back and see, if there are anybody, is there anyone here in the audience that came out specifically, I, you know, because you came out tonight. If you have a, a question, uh, certainly ask it now, they'll save you a trip later.
I'm just curious as to where the exits, I probably. Because I live on.
Excuse me. Okay, there's. Ma'am, sir, ma'am, 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 you want to give us your name and address, please?
Elaine Courier.
Okay, Elaine, and where do you live?
Fifty five twenty thirty road.
Fifty five twenty thirty? And talk, talk to me.
Been there since nineteen fifty nine.
Okay. And, uh, your question is, where is the access going to be?
Yes, where? They're gonna.
Okay, uh, just work, if you want to show them on thirty road?
I think, was there it somewhere? Is that gonna be near third, which way is it gonna be, is that gonna be near three thirty two?
Uh.
No, no.
Way out there. We'll go down a little, or go up a little bit, cause there's a area map in this corner. Yeah, so three, three thirty two is, is somewhere over here, this is pretty road, this is their existing entrance right now, and these are the existing. Parcels and land that's out there now, this is the green area. They're gonna add a new road. Somewhere in this vicinity, in between the existing curb cut and three thirty two. That's where the entrance off of pretty close.
There's gonna be another, there's another road, I think, the town's putting it on then, somewhere in this area, I believe.
The other side going up to.
Part of the water.
Yeah, part of the watering.
So.
To be clear, it's not, the town is not putting.
What's that? Are you joining the art, it's there?
Yes, yep. Yeah, put, we're putting it together.
Just expanding down towards three thirty two.
Right, exactly. Yep.
Okay, so. The, uh, the applicant, uh, Mr. Burke and his. His, uh, engineer will be at our, uh, what is it, the June twenty sixth?
June twenty sixth.
Twenty sixth.
Which is a Wednesday.
Okay.
So ma'am, if, if you want to hear more about this in more detail. Pardon? If you want to hear more about what's. What Mr. Burke wants to do out there in more detail, June twenty sixth, in this room, we're going to, uh, talk about this application. Alright, okay. And thanks for coming out tonight, anybody else that came out to, uh. Hear anything about, is anybody online? Okay, so. We'll move on with the, uh. The resolution, uh, with the intent to be the lead agents. Someone want to make a motion?
They want to be lead agency for C P N twenty three.
Okay, thank you. Motion second, everybody's come for all the, uh, affected agencies have been. Contacted, we get the school district. We added that a while back. Okay, we got them all. For discussion, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Folks, could you take it outside and?
Got a quick second.
Alrighty. Next application. Is, uh, C P N twenty four oh fifty one Libby Shatlin. Owns property fifty two seventy one, Manti's Drive. Uh, Libby wants to install a new patio landscaping. Replace those, place water treatment system for their existing residence. And Scott?
That is correct.
Good evening.
Good evening, that is the scope of the project is essentially. Excuse me. Site improvements such as, um, a new patio. An additional patio. Relocation of the waste water system and the, a new access drive to. Go along with the new patio, the existing residence is being remodeled as we speak and it's almost complete. The owners would like to do this work hopefully in the fall after the summer has concluded. When we got into looking at the additional impervious area, we noticed that. Uh, we were exceeding the allowable percentage, so we. Uh, decided to do a lot line amendment to reduce some of the land from the parcel to the west. By about a tenth of an acre so that we would be not producing a design that added any more impervious area. Than what was existing, so a lot line. Amendment application is currently in progress. In concert with this application. I should mention that Andrew Murphy is our landscape architect and he is. According to your board, there he's on the line, if you'd like to speak with him about. Excuse me, the landscaping plan. Um, we've received comments from. M R B, um, I've posted a reply today. I think the comments were generally. Straightforward. And, and I hope our responses were adequate.
Okay, uh. So you're doing the lot line adjustment, uh. Which in terms of. Impervious redistribution, the impervious, the building coverage, uh, actually improves the situation out there regarding.
Yes.
Fifty seven seventy. Uh, fifty two seventy one. So. That is, uh, a plus. Um. Next one, please. Now, why are they moving?
Because it interferes with the, uh, configuration of the new driveway. And it also reportedly hasn't really worked all that well.
And more importantly. Uh, you got a couple of trees coming down. Over where the new field is.
Yes.
And I think we asked your P R C and you applied to, uh, provide some. Some new trees, I guess, on the, uh. North side? To the right, is that correct?
That would be the north, yes.
Yeah. Uh, how many trees did you provide, did you add there?
Maybe I'll have Andrew weigh in on.
Okay.
The landscaping, Andrew, are you there? Hello?
Yep, good evening, folks, I'm here, just playing with the mute button, sorry. Um, yeah, so we're, the plan is showing removal of three trees, um. Up near the top of the property line there, and we're coming in with, uh, proposing three new trees along the north property line to replace one for one. The removals.
So Andrew, uh, do you want to discuss a little bit the shoreline guidelines as to? What your opinion is regarding, uh, compliance?
Sure, so in regards to that, uh, views from the lake, um, the only thing with any elevation that's being proposed as part of these improvements. Uh, would be the masonry walls that you see just, uh, along the bottom of the driveway. Um, and those are going to be approximately twenty inch height, uh, just, you know, kind of seat wall purpose. Um, so, you know, low walls to begin with, uh, everything else is going to be at or below grade in terms of the new patio and new driveway. So, you know, in terms of how, how those walls are, are seen or not from the, the shoreline, um, there is some existing. Um, uh, there are some existing trees on the adjacent lot to the north that already begin to, to block this area. Um, and then with the addition of the new trees, as well as the two buildings, the two existing, uh, houses themselves. Um, views to this, you know, this proposed area of improvement are, are pretty veiled. Uh, so I don't, and I think I stated on the, the plan there, I don't have any concerns with meeting the shoreline guidelines. With what we proposed.
Hey, on your tree schedule, I, I think this was the one I was. Uh, your caliber, your deciduous, uh, that has to be two and a half inch minimum. Think you had two to two and a half, just make sure. It's two. You know?
We, I can adjust that, you're saying it's the, the two point five inches, the minimum?
Yeah, two point five, see caliber.
Gotcha, yeah, no, we can make that adjustment. Two point five to three.
Uh, I do have, we received today from, uh. E C B, uh, their discussion and recommendations, uh, regarding this application. Well, without. Getting into reading this whole thing, uh, Kim, do you want to give an overview, maybe of what you're concerned or? If you have in front of you.
I do not.
Okay, the E C B recommends the size and species of all trees being proposed for removal identified on the site plans before the site plan approval. Uh, from the landscaping sheet, the, of the site plan appears that four trees are being removed. You said three.
We think three, um, at least three.
Yeah, I, if I could clarify that for a sec, the, the trees to the, um. To the west, the three trees to the west are, are gonna be larger trees, but most likely black walnut and eastern cottonwood. If they match, you know, the other fifty that are just west, uh, of the, the tree, the tree stand just west of this project, so, um. Those are the three shown at the top of the plan, and then there is one other tree. Maybe that they referenced that's, you can kind of see it in the, um. In the footprint of the driveway. The bottom, uh, right corner footprint of the driveway, that's. It's a, it's an ornamental hydrangea tree form, so it's not like it's an existing native or a canopy tree, that's. Just a small ornamental that's existing right now.
I agree, it's a small tree.
Yeah.
I'm looking at a picture of it right now, yeah.
Oh, there you go.
E C B wanted to make sure that all your. Shrubs and perennials, uh, are all native.
We can do that. Yep, we can do that.
Okay. Um, since this parcel is in the scenic view shed. Uh, the E C B recommends that additional trees, at least four be added to the landscaping plan to offset the trees being removed. Uh, I think you did that, right?
Yeah.
With the. Four. On the north side, so.
Yeah, we're, yeah.
I know it's brought up at the P R C. Uh, the E C B recommends additional plantings lakeside to soften the view of the scenic view shed. This could be a location for native trees to be added to the parcel. Small native trees like dogwoods, service berry and red buds would work well. Uh, tool trees are a large native choice, they grow tall with a narrow crown, tool trees have a little field to. Uh tool trees are large native choice, they grow tall with a narrow crown, tool trees have a little field to uh currently only the giraffe version of the one of the shrubs of small trees is available. I don't know what it is either, that's why. Uh the ECB recommends the root zones for all the remaining trees be clearly marked so they be avoided during construction. Uh ECB was uncertain if this was the parcel that the water was being directed to or from the Manti's Creek.
Because the parcel above it, right?
Correct. Yeah, so that was the ECB's recommendations. We got no comments from the county planning board, uh the CEO, uh good for some, no comments, Kevin O'Leary had no comments. Uh Tyler had no comments, are you, how far along are you with him?
We, I have been in touch with Tyler regarding approval of the wastewater system because he said that he could do this one. And keep us um out of the DO HQ. Um so, I'm I'm pursuing that with him, he said as long as we were two hundred feet back from the lake, he believed that he could take care of it because it's not a tear down rebuild, it's a it's a remodeling place, so different, different criteria, I guess, which enabled him to do that, which would be very helpful.
Okay, uh Lance, we have regarding the septic system. And yeah, number eight. Per addition to the building. Okay, so. Yeah, I I think. What's your no comments? Sure, guidelines you talked about, land swap you talked about, MRB, your letter had to do with the septic system. To some degree. Yeah.
Notes in the plan?
And then review comments provided by Mr. Harder, who responsible as I am in judgment of those.
Okay, anybody in the audience regarding this application down on Manti's? If not, let's move ahead. So type two resolution for the seeker and why don't we take the two together with the single stage? Somebody wanna move?
I shall move to approve on this bundle plan, seek resolution type Q action and a site, single stage site plan approval at fifty two seventy one Manti's Drive. TPN twenty four dash zero five one. Uh with the stated nine or the?
I have eleven conditions. I I believe number three, as written, can be removed. And so there, all the rest are your standard conditions that you've been imposing on site plans, the ones that were added uh which were nine, the law line adjustments to be planned is to be signed and filed by the signatures, you need to fix the site plans. Number ten, the landscape plan is to be updated to reflect the minimum caliber of a treat, be two and a half inches. And then number eleven, landscape plan to be revised to identify that all landscaping is to be of nature, to be a native species.
With the stated.
I'll second that. Okay, motion second. How do we ensure that the trees, these were trees would be installed? I would not ask you for a manuscript. It would be the issuance of the CFO would be not given until?
CFO would require all the conditions to be provided in that.
Okay.
Can add a condition that all landscaping is to be installed as per the plans prior decisions of the CFO if we follow that out.
Well, I just, no, we've read it.
Record for check list sale, that's part of the code enforcement officer.
Cause otherwise, I, you know, I, we've had some, and as busy as well is now. Whether he go back and look at the plan.
Let's spell it out, okay. There's twelve conditions, that's for correction.
Okay. Okay, so we've got everything uh for the settings, okay? Uh all favor? Hi, okay, you did it, that's right. Okay, thank you, thank you on that one.
Well, I can't figure out how Scott and Andrew knew how to submit the shoreline development guideline statement because they did, it's right in there in their application, the first one I've seen in six months.
Really?
Do you look that up somewhere special or?
It's there.
No, he's, he's used to deal with us.
You guys told us that you wanted it.
Okay. Mr. Harder is also here for twenty four oh fifty two, Ron. How do you pronounce?
Cesari.
Cesari. Ron Cesari has a property at a yet to be assigned address on Middle Cheshire Road. And Cesari would like to construct a single table dwelling along with all the accoutrements, including the septic system and driveway and all that, so tell us what Ron wants to do out there.
Well, well, that's pretty much it, as you may have noticed, he's put in some golf improvements, uh putting green and a couple tea locations, and he takes immaculate care of it. It's rare for me to go out on a site and have it so accessible when we're doing our research, but the design that we've come up with is in concert with your bridge line guidelines, so where he would like his house located. Um does technically have a visual impact according to your environmental regs, however um I think it's very well mitigated in that the majority of the driveway is hidden by the existing tree row and additionally, we're not invading the steep slopes, we're holding a maximum ten percent grade, uh which um is also in your requirements along with the uh pullovers at the interval specified. The house is a walkout style house, so it fits in with the slope as the bridge line guidelines ask it to be. Uh the roof height is below the maximum. We've received a comment and intended to comply with the lighting criteria, so there's no intention of broadcasting anything but controlled light there. The house to my knowledge will be of an earth tone and will have its own individual landscaping around the house proper, but it's intended to blend in with the tree row to the north and the tree row that kind of runs northwest, southeast, blocks the majority of the driveway. The uh the rigs speak to uh not fighting the site and that's what I think we wanna do when we design these projects. And that's what that design reflects. Um it's essentially a a single story home with a walkout basement. We are still trying to see if we can get sanitary sorted, go north and perhaps facilitate some future lots as we spoke to you about once upon a time, but at this point in time, uh Ron wants to proceed with this project and we'll let the sewer work itself out hopefully.
Oh, it goes downtown. Scott, I did a couple questions.
Sure, there was a comment that you needed additional turnaround for fire department in the park at the end.
Yeah, uh Mike produced a comment about the the code requirement for that, I think we were very close, you know, I didn't look at the ones in the code manual so much as I was looking at accessing the garage, but I think with a few minor revisions, we can achieve those dimensions.
Yeah, I think every two hundred and fifty feet you have those. Yeah, the pullovers, them eighty by whatever they are.
Thirty.
Thirty by thirty head. I looked at your elevation plans, I couldn't tell. I wish you guys would do it, maybe like the scenic guidelines or whatever, but on your Revit or whatever you do in your AutoCAD.
For for the architectural plan, do you mean?
Yeah, show the height of the roof, you have all the other height, but you never show a roof height.
Yeah, well, that, well, that's right, and I I noticed that too, and and when uh um Mike contacted me to produce a roof height calculation, I got into the architectural plans as well, and I had, I had to compute it using other means to figure out the ridge height.
And we bring those up, cause it was, I I got it pretty close and I don't know, it was a Revit, is it Revit or is it AutoCAD?
I don't know, that that was done by another consultant.
You did that.
Those are my calculations.
Yeah. Right there. Come up with an average of thirty point five.
Thirty point five.
Right.
And then a single story, right?
Yes.
I saw it's two story.
It looks like a two story, it's got a, it's got a it's kind of a steep roof to it, but it's a single story with a walkout.
Can we have those elevations?
Yeah, you wanna go to those elevations.
Those are the high calcs, the
There you go.
Architectural.
Now that's facing.
That would be, that would be facing northwest, right? No, that would be facing, excuse me. Uh southwest.
Okay. So, but when you, okay, go a little further, Kim.
Yeah, right here. There's another one too, below this too, there is.
So it's, would this be the?
That's a walk outside.
That's the face, face toward the, facing Middle Cheshire. So, that's essentially what you'll see.
Right. So it's a single story with a tall roof and a walkout.
And it's got a back, so it looks like a back patio box. So the the roadside that's facing isn't just a side of a building.
No, it's basement.
It's
Oh, I can.
Kind of a little bit more, there's more movement.
Yeah, I just wish you, you could point your average and then, but you're totally in no touch somewhere.
But I I remember that I went through all the architectures and get to the ridge elevation and confirmed it. Um and why the architect didn't put that on there as normally is the case, I don't know.
I I've been on board for a long time, I've asked for it, never seen her.
I I asked for it.
But you have it in your Scott, you have it in your zone data block, thirty point five, so I mean, that's what I looked at, I said, well, okay, the average is thirty point five.
Yep.
I wanted to try to scale this. Well, I gave way more architect scale a long time ago.
Well, as I understand, we're we're taking our ridge elevation and then we're comparing it with the ground elevation of the corners around.
Yeah, average, yep.
Yep.
To get the average and so.
Sheet the corners.
Right.
Okay, the driveway site distance, uh it'd be nice if you showed that down there in the middle Cheshire.
Okay.
Okay. Certainly, I think it's okay.
I think it is too, but that's fine.
Drive by there every day since.
We'll say, did you walk up there, Tim? All the way in the tunnel?
Uh no. It could drive up. Somebody has.
I have. I walked it. Wow, it was a long walk.
Uh ECB also reviewed this. As the driveway is very long, ECB recommends that all driveway runoff be mitigated. Okay, ECB recommends the runoff from the home and other impervious covers at the top of the slope also be mitigated. ECB knows that the parcel's large, rain gardens are a possibility to help mitigate runoff. ECB notes that uh geothermal heating could be a possibility for the homeowner to consider. Uh the proposed hub will be in the scenic view shed and there's no landscaping plan provided. And the information in the scenic view shed statement is very brief in regard, in this regard, ECB recommends landscaping plan be submitted before approval, native species should be included, ECB recommends the drainage swales. Uh probably be added to the parcel, since it was formed, not being altered or plugged in anyway. Shrubs in these drainage areas help slow control runoff. Just have a sweep.
We will have to do a sweep, yes.
And you need a speedy sweep.
Right, so, so, why?
Cause it's over one acre residential, it would trigger the need.
Are a lot of things we talked about here, as far as mitigation that all be considered as part of the sweep.
No, so the sweep is erosion semi-control for one acre or more residential. Water quality, quantity, don't get fired until you're over five acres. So there, there isn't, and they're outside of the area that the town has provided regulation above and beyond what the state does, which is like from properties where we have twenty thousand square foot of disturbance, so they're outside of both of those areas to acquire it. So to the board.
That being said, you have provided some stormwater.
We, we have, we have, we have shown erosion control as we should. With with this, there also is just a tremendous amount of land area that takes these flows and and uses the the existing turf out there to treat the runoff.
Your downsouts, are they on grade or?
Uh we haven't, we haven't done a downsout um plan, I don't think at this point, we hadn't really addressed those, but we've we could, we could do, do that if you'd like, like us to do so.
Well, at some point, I guess you, you're gonna have to make that decision.
But I think normally um splash blocks are preferreds.
This one, what a water, water hazard.
Like you say, it's gonna go right down.
The issue of this scenic view shed, I think you you had said, and you were up there, I guess you could see the lake, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Really nice.
So the lake can see you.
Right.
I mean, it's over an acre, um it fits into the proud profile, it meets the what we try to do normally.
Yeah, I'm just thinking the source. Trust, you have any idea what he's proposing on his own as far as landscaping?
Um no, I, no, I don't, I mean, I guess when I get into residential projects with you folks and other uh communities, normally the residential is left up to the owners and they work at it aggressively as they go forward with their projects.
I will say those, or there's a tree line.
Yep.
In the back corner, both of those back corners, a little big tree line back in there. Behind will be the house. So I mean, from the lake, you probably see housing tree line behind it, but you'd have to plant a pretty big tree to
Yeah, well. I mean, the fact that it is a lower profile house, that's a, that's a positive.
And and we're twenty nine point six acres, own house on twenty nine point six acres versus your your rigs are identifying like a one acre.
And you're below the ridge line.
Yeah.
So it's not like, you know, house is sticking up on top.
Right, we're not at the ridge line, but we're
Okay.
We're visible.
Let's see if we got anything else here.
It's a gravel driveway.
I think they'll do gravel initially for s- for sure.
Do we have the um thirty foot pavement at the end of the driveway, in Middle Cheshire?
Yes, I think I, I think I called it.
It's noted on the lands. So the rest of the driveway wasn't noted, I didn't, I couldn't find.
And we can identify that.
What's your, what's your?
Fletcher, Fletcher, Fletcher made a comment about possibly a sign.
Being posted identifying the driveway.
Right, yeah.
Because it. Um, is near the, um, I guess I'll call it. Bypass area around West Ridge Run.
That's right.
And. That's certainly reasonable.
Okay. And we talked about the uh, one inch water meter chip. Okay, he's. You got, you got a resolution. Okay, we got that covered. Uh, we heard nothing from Cheshire Fire, we heard nothing from Kevin. Mulvaney County Planning Board did not review this. Tyler, you're once again, uh.
Well, this one's going to DOH because it's um. A full raise fill and I. When I contacted Tyler, he indicated he couldn't do this one, so. Um, I I like the idea that was floated tonight with the. With the DOT, excuse me, the DOH taking as long as they do it, we could. On condition on the CFO that will let us. Get something accomplished this summer instead of waiting for that.
And be conditioned on the sudden, that would be modified.
Right now it reads building code?
Correct.
Okay, yes. I don't think, uh, Murphy.
I think this Ford historically has.
Again, you'd have a house with no septic.
Yeah. The last one I submitted to DOH was six months.
Yeah, it seemed to be an issue. Okay, the committee. Just mentioned that it appeared the property had been. Not farmed.
Right.
Though it is potentially. Farmland, could be farmed, but it's not being farmed, so really they're not losing. You're not losing any farmland as a result of this. Yeah, that's what I said.
What district is it? It's not an ag, is it?
What is this for zoning?
Yeah.
This is CR one.
CR one, okay, so it's not an egg one.
Hey, anybody in the audience, uh? Okay, sir. Give us your name and address and. Let us know how you feel about.
John Adams, thirty five, thirty one, Little Cheshire Road.
Hi, John.
And I have one or two questions really. I guess not being a. Understanding exactly where, where is the house going to be in relationship to the Middle Cheshire Road? How far back from it?
Way on top of the hill.
Here's Middle Cheshire Road. His driveway.
Okay, oh, okay, I see.
House. You probably have seen the putting green before.
Yep.
That's where the putting green is.
It's behind that.
House is.
Further.
And I guess my second question is that, uh. What kind of septic system is it? I mean, you know. I've been here a number of times and asking about septic systems like the sewer. And he mentioned that he was later on. Uh, or in his presentation, he mentioned something about hoping to add more houses there. And and I agree, I think he's nice, it would be nice. And and I don't understand. Where? Uh, why? There, uh, and there's an error. An arrow, uh, air. That is. They're kind of forgotten. And, uh, I just wondered what he was gonna put in. It probably has a very, a very strict regulations, I'm sure. And, uh. But I would like to mention to the board, it would like. I mean. Maybe the next election. I don't know. But how can we? In it, in, in. In our area, there were about ten or twelve homes. And and we do not have any.
Well, the sewer, the sewer system is. Owned and operated by the county. And I know. Uh, when they built the extension down on Ridge Run or, uh, yeah. Uh, that there was an attempt to try to get sewer along the back of those homes.
Yeah.
On Middle Cheshire. The county said, we're not gonna do it, we don't wanna do it, so. It it didn't happen, it it's a shame, uh, it is almost like an island out there with no sewer. And I'm sure in terms of this application. Mr. Harder and his client would love to have public sewer, but they don't. And since they don't, uh, they are putting a rather sophisticated onsite septic system in. At a considerable cost. And, uh. I'm sure, you know, it's, it it will function, but again, there's a cost of building it and a cost of maintaining it. And if you have public sewer, it would be.
So this board really has no.
We have no control over it now, uh.
No pressure that you're gonna apply?
If if the residents, I again, the procedure to get sewer is what a petition?
There's a, there's a set of petition process, petition the town board, get your neighbors. To create a sewer district, they'll create it for you. Um, and essentially the. Cost of the sewer is built back over. Twenty years. Uh, or the installing the sewer systems build back. As an annual charge. If you wanna do it.
Well, I'm sure you're aware of the fact that we're in, in other words. All my water. No matter, a- any of those houses. No matter where. What happens in the best sewer system? Where does it go? Water doesn't run uphill. And it's going right down the lake and and. That's what I don't understand. Why somebody? But, uh. But I have to get up and say that and. I appreciate your time.
Okay, well. Thank you, John, for coming out. All right, excuse me. I sneezed, uh. Anybody else have any questions, concerns?
Getting talked to.
No.
Eat a beer.
Anybody, uh, have anything else? Nobody else? Okay, let's move. Give me a resolution, a bundle of resolution for.
I'll, uh. I will bundle our type two seeker resolution and our single stage site plan approval for twenty four zero five two. At a. Unaddressed location on Middle Cheshire Road. Um, Lance, and if you could correct me on the. Um, conditions for this.
I have seven rain, which we've modified, it's number seven to identify prior traditions of CFO. In regards to the subject system. Number eight should be added, such your parking right feet for a vacant lot. Um, that was not added in.
Yep.
And then number nine, I believe you've mentioned the board, the site distance to get it. I have a total of nine conditions.
I'll start with that motion.
Motion second, the only other thing, Lance, I think the revision date on the plan was eight point eight.
Yes.
Thank you. And that same data flies though. All right, got a motion, a second for discussion, if not all in favor.
Thank you.
Next to CPN twenty four. Oh, thirty three. Uh, Gerber Homes has a property at forty four seventy two County Route sixteen. And we'd like to construct a single family dwelling with a wastewater system, sounds in there. A vacant lot in the R one thirty. District. And good evening.
Good evening, I'm Scott Beholder.
Hi, Scott.
The engineer representing this project. Um, that's right, this will be the fourth time we've been here to talk about, um. Residential houses on this four lot subdivision was previously approved, um. The first time we were here, we presented the access, uh, plan. And then subsequently, we did, uh, lot four, which is just off to the right on this plan, and then last year. Uh, we did the lot one, uh, house, which is shown adjacent to this parcel. On the other side of the access road. Um, at the time that we developed the access plan, we addressed the stormwater, um, and. Critical site distance issues associated with how old these four parcels would access. Uh, Wesley Road. And, um, we implemented a SWIP at that time, so we're under an existing SWIP for. The project at this time. Uh, our site plan is is relatively simple, it's a, um. Uh, the the house would be located, uh, on the north side of the parcel, it's, uh, maybe a little unique here, and we've, um. I've been instructed to make a note on the plan that the front facing. Basad is actually toward the rear of the site, which is a little unique, that's just a complimentary to the way that the house is accessed. But it does provide some restrictions relative to. Uh, accessory structures that was pointed out this as well, so. Those comments have been incorporated into, uh, into the plan here. All the utilities excess, uh, from Westlake Road. Uh, seemingly that we've done it for the other two. Uh, we've received some comments from MRB and the steel week, we, uh. I've got those and we're in the process of. Making some minor and technical changes to the plan that really don't significantly affect any of the layouts that are shown here. So we're here tonight, um, to answer any questions and hopefully collect a. Uh, uh, approval to move forward with, uh, the rest of the administrative issues.
I guess our CEO had a number of administrative issues. Yes, as you call them, uh, things that. He was looking for on the plan. Uh, did you see those?
I did, yeah, I happened to address them.
Okay, and I think any approval here tonight would be conditional upon your meeting those. Addressing those issues. We're in scenic view shed.
It's just an acre.
Just an acre.
One place that shows a point nine nine, seven nine. And then it's assessed for an acre.
The site plan is, I mean, the elevation is a two story. Home, if I recall.
It is, yeah.
So the entrance is facing.
The access road, the north side, yeah.
And and I had questions about the height of the house. And we needed to go through that. That one, another one balled with my brain on that one.
You know what the height of the house is gonna be?
It is from grade level, it's twenty nine, uh, point five, I believe is what we showed on the plan thereabouts.
Okay, and then the, uh. R one thirty. Thirty feet, thirty five feet.
Thirty five.
Thirty five.
I had it higher than that.
We did, um, provide a, a view shed, uh, statement.
Yep.
Where that's similar, uh, elevation to the other houses that have been recently developed and significantly below the ridge. Um, also sort of, uh, screened, uh, from the existing vegetation that. Is adjacent to Westlake Road.
Those trees are instead of pines or rowa pines?
Yeah, uh. Mostly cedar, um, a smattering, uh, not really in a line, it's sort of a, a thick growth, uh, that fills that. Uh, steep slope area.
Definitely tense and not touch that, correct?
Correct, yeah. They're shown roughly, uh, on the, uh. On the site plan there, there's. Small corner, uh, so it's a squiggly line that represents the existing tree stand. And then, uh, you can see our septic system expansion area comes down. Uh, just into the the corner of the tree, so we've brushed that back to, uh, the bottom of the grading.
That's a dash line here, a limit of.
Disturbance and the tree line, that's right. Yeah. So, but the predominance of the existing tree stand, uh, is intended to remain.
And I think you're in for. Lot three too.
It's like, yeah. Safe plans for that.
So essentially I'll be flipping this thing out. Is there any concern on the boards? They have regarding that. Vegetated sloper area that. Something might happen like happened. Further up, uh, Westlake Road toward the city. Where it's at a later date. Someone could come in and. Remove that vegetation, was us assuming that the vegetation will later remain, is that a concern or? Something that.
I guess that's a concern, so is there just asking the question that they have done, but touches? That's a question unfortunate.
Well, I mean, we can certainly put on the plan or require the plan state that the. Area outside the, uh, limited. Disturbance. Remain undisturbed.
I know the neighbors below him are concerned about water runoff there.
Yeah, I think a lot of that got taken care of mostly.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, yeah, no, that certainly improves things. In fact, I think when you came in for lot four. Uh, that your neighbor across the street said, boy, things are a lot better out there.
Yeah.
Were.
Yeah, I talked to him too. He was actually getting water from another road. Up the hill a little bit further. Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's easy to put a note on the plan. Essentially, the, uh. Area outside the, uh, disturbance line will be. Remain. Untouched and. Vegetated. Is that okay, Scott?
It's very consistent with our goals as well, so no problem adding that.
Talk about who maintains the driveway slash access road, how that works with the families there.
Yeah, there is an active HOA, so, uh, that's on file with the county, uh, currently, so that was taken care of. At the time that, uh, we came in for lot four, the first.
I couldn't remember.
Yeah, I think Chris reviewed it. From the approach.
Do we have a name on that?
A name on the road?
Yeah.
Um, I had one in mind, uh, but I haven't, uh, run it by anyone yet.
Oh.
And with some folks that have moved in, uh, it might be best, uh, for them to make a selection and. Reapply one, so it it's still up in the air.
I know it doesn't have to be a road until there's five houses, actually, but. Private, all the private roads normally have a name on them. For drives.
We could call it Robert La Course.
Hollander Drive.
As the closest I'll be to them.
Right now, they all have, uh, County Route sixteen. All the lots. The longer you're, the longer you wait, it's gonna be probably more cumbersome to the residents, because they'll have to change all their. Okay, dresses and stuff like that, so.
I think I can story them, say something.
That's true.
Oh, they have a name?
Yeah.
Okay.
Elevation.
Drawings, sorry.
Sorry, Chuck, um, I, I might be. Like backwards and forwards and myself here, um, I I feel like the elevation that, and it's, I think it's on the second page, Kim, if we take a scroll. Uh, I lied, the third page. Okay, so. I think this view. And the site plan view might be flip flop, because I'm, I'm looking at that bump out there. So the garage, the bump out. And then what it shows in the site plan is the bump out is. Road facing, so like the orientation is kind of wonky, I. It, this is bugging the crap out of me right now, I'm sorry, but I, can we flip back to the site plan?
Do you want me to highlight which side pieces?
Yeah, because. It's. I feel like the garage is.
This is the front of the house right here that we showed you.
Okay. Okay, and then if we could go back to the elevation. It's, it's, it's just back, it's.
Yeah.
Backwards.
That's the secondary. The bottom of the screen is the secondary.
Yeah.
Driver road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Westlake Road is to the top.
Right, so then the garage on the site plan is on.
You don't, like, there, and that faces the secondary.
So then the site plan, the garage should be. So then the site plan, the garage should be just moved over to the. If we go back to the site plan, it shows that.
Roll back down.
For a site plan.
The site plan. So the site plan is showing the garage.
On the left.
On the left. But I think it should be the right is how I think I'm seeing it. Thank you, Kim, for navigating.
You good?
So it's, it's just.
You're not gonna submit on the site, you're gonna have the architectural plan.
Right.
Be updated to the site.
Right, okay, site plan is.
Correct.
Source, got it.
Unless.
Unless.
Kim could go back to elevations. Thank you, you can go down quite ways. Down, down, down. Keep going.
I was, I was picking up on what you were putting down earlier. The architects do not label the total height, you have to calculate it based on the trusses. And make an assumption on what the one sill. At the, that the trusses set on is, it's a very, it's a frustration that I have as well.
Well, I run Revit, and you can add a dimension in there.
Pretty easily, yeah.
And that dimension, I mean, you got nine feet in the basement. And then a fourteen-foot joyce, and then the second floor is eight foot and is twenty-seven to the roof. According to that.
Yeah.
So it does, the math didn't add up to me at the most, and I know it had to be average, so I didn't figure the average.
Yeah, so there was a little bit of an education that I received as Scott was walking through his calculation. I'll update my plan, I think that will bump up there, that it is an average, the elevation. Height that I provided on the plan is from mudsill to peak. And I now know that I need to go back and look at that as an average around all for all other than the corners are.
Alright.
We'll update that, I'm confident we're under thirty-five.
That's what I would have you verify, it's just, you could actually put that average on your, on there. On your topo, basically, figure that out. Yeah, it just, it looked like a high house.
Yeah, with the walkout, but the walkout is very limited into into the one corner and we're backfilling around.
Yeah.
Six inches.
Tight site.
Challenge.
Yeah. Uh, just looking through third parties. I'm going through the findings, Lance, and I see no new new comments from town CEO, so he had his original.
Yeah, I have comments.
Uh, and they're a little. Nothing from Jim Fletcher. Uh, how are you making out with your something system? Same problem everybody else have?
We're big, we're conventional and Tyler can approve ours, we'll get our application indirectly. We've worked that way for the previous season, no issues.
Okay. Kim, I didn't ask you about this application for ECB, did you go over? I didn't see it on the agenda.
We did do this one. Um, I think if I remember right, we just did one that we took all into the tree areas, so this is smoked area.
Any more than they had? Alright, well, if you put that note on there. Not disturbing it, that should take care.
There is a cedar tree that probably has to come down, isn't there? There's a cedar right in the middle of that.
Um, there, there was a couple alone stragglers in the home site that we left after we did the mowing. But it would be, it not represented as an independent tree on the site plan. Because I've captured with the squiggly line, the predominant tree line.
Yeah.
How big a cedar? There's one fallen down next to it, and then there's. And cedars are around here, it's fair.
Well, it's in the footprint of the house, so it doesn't show. Okay.
I don't know, do you mean, does it have to come down, does it not have to come down?
But with the extensive grain and the complications associated with, you know, how tight the utilities are there. There's not much hope that we could work around it.
No, I understand that, but it needs to stay on the plan that it's coming now. You know what I mean?
Oh, yeah, we could definitely do that, locate it and put it in.
Yeah. You know which one I'm talking about?
Yep.
Then ones that have dead next to it, they'll all pass over. Next to the pile of cedar that's on the ground there.
Okay, well, as long as anything that's not related to the structure of the septic system of the house is. And school district, fire company, no comments, nothing from county highway department, Kevin. Didn't have to go to county planning board. MRB, I think they were talking about steep slopes, protecting the slopes.
Yes, we got some special notes and some changes to the erosion control techniques. Uh, no problem providing those.
That's in the condition. To comply with that, alright, I think. Anybody in the audience regarding this application? County Route sixteen or not? If we're ready to move on to. The type two seeker and the, was there any, anything, Lance? Is anything that you, you had regarding this application, MRB? I think you talked about sleep, sleep slopes.
Just for the awareness, compliance style and additional, the only thing that I had was that the project overall SWIP. Um, just to be as part of the final submission, just provide that updated. Overall SWIP to reflect the changes that's present. And that's just taking the same document that was previously approved and just inserting some information. That governs the overall project.
So that's Scott said he'd comply with any. Okay, uh, someone give me a combo seeker and single stage site.
Combo bundle CPN twenty-four oh three-three is a type two. And the single stage site plan with, what'd we say, Lance?
So there's seven written. I believe number seven can be removed, I don't think there's additional landscaping that's required, that must have been a carryover. So that means there's six, as shown, those are your six standard ones. And then I believe this board has added four. So the ones that were added would be number seven, the area outside of disturbed areas, the trick that are in the plans is to remain untouched. I don't think, no, because it's already noted in the plans that it's declaring, so I think this is just a finding, basically. Number eight, all comes from the quarter force officer, hard to be addressed, where do signatures on the plans, that was not added into standard. Number nine, I believe the architectural plans are being requested to be updated to reflect the correct orientation of the house as shown in the site plans. So I think that's the direction that we're asking, they should.
Yeah.
Um, number ten, I, I, I tried to cap what was being caught, I, I think it's the zoning table in the safe plan is to be updated to reflect. The house height.
Did the house height validated at less than thirty-five?
Okay.
Based on the average.
And then Chris mentioned.
Address the removal of the cedar tree. There's a cedar, it's still being removed.
Okay.
Right. Right.
Plans to be updated to identify the location of the cedar tree that's posted.
I'll second.
Take a caution second, Chris, just want to confirm that. In the, when they originally did the driveway, you, I think you checked the easements, the common drive. I'm sure that all happened before that site plan got signed, and Scott said there is an HOA. But I guess it's a formal HOA or informal HOA or. Is it something just the neighbors are shaking their hands?
Well, let's take a look. I mean, it's, it's possible, it's hopeful that I'll look at something I've already reviewed and, no, that's, that's what it should be, but. So it's just, it's kind of a condition that says. Access and shared use agreement, which if there's an HOA agreement in place, that covers the shared. Access and shared use shall be reviewed by engineer, very, very signatures.
Okay. Yep, just to keep all the neighbors happy. There's no. There's no disagreement as to who pays what, okay, that's the conditions. We got the resolutions? Hey Scott?
Thank you.
I guess you'll see it for number three, so.
See you, Scott.
Thank you.
Alright. Uh, we're down to the sketch plan review for Sarah Janeco. This we discussed at our last meeting, but I wanted to push it, continue it to tonight. Because Mark and Scott were not here, so we didn't get their input on. Uh, this. Soon to be an application for a PUD. It is not an application yet, it, the town board is looking for our thoughts on. The application of what. The Janecos are proposing for this plan. And again, I don't want to get into the details of the, you know, the roads and design and all that. But in terms of the uses, its applicability in terms of how it applies to our comprehensive plan. Uh, its location in town, is what the Janecos is proposing. In the good conscience with what's, what should be built. So I open it up to the board for either further comments, I know.
Real, real quick.
Yeah, I know you submitted a.
After the last go-around with the, with the board, we did add the sidewalks. And we also added about a hundred, approximately a hundred parking spaces kind of scattered around the area in the townhome region. We also redefined the mini storage to be a little bit easier to kind of see where it's gonna be. Um, one of the requests was when we talked, kind of talked with the town, the board was. The access road to the commercial being more in the rear, and then we would kind of work with the town to discuss, you know, updating setbacks up. We also had Dan Hackett, the landscape architect, come up with a conceptual landscape plan, if you want to pull that up. It shows basically overlays all the new. Pieces with, with a conceptual design.
So you're gonna put every one of those trees?
Most of them.
I know, we're not gonna hold you till now.
Yeah, I was just kind of showing, you know, some of the requests of what we can do with buffers and.
Yeah, I know, I know what my concerns was, this fine road. Terms of looking at the back of the homes up on the hill there. And having some sort of landscape on that, that hill so that you're not. Looking down on the road or looking up into the back of the homes where they store the kids' scooters and big wheels.
Right, yeah, there is a pretty, like we said before, there is a pretty big area between where the houses are and stable gate and where our development kind of starts. It's more than, I think it's an access to it, so plus there's a lot of scrub brush between it to buffer. Um, one other thing that we did add, talking to the, um. The developer was the sports court area for the area, it's like a multi-use about the side of the tennis court, you could have two pickleball courts there.
Where's that?
Well, it's just behind the. And this year, we got, we're asking market type care and design, kind of give more of a long lead and partner based on sort of. Little bit of helps, but those will all be determined once we really dive into the engineering.
I think from my perspective, just looking at it, it sounds like you're thinking too much of it, but the street's not that. So you've already started to look at that, heavy vegetation around the separating, for various reasons for those purposes. Um, access for emergency vehicles and. Uh, just general transportation for group delivery vehicles and things. And then what I'm noticing of these types of resultances that parking is a real challenge, quite often. They'll be listed as two for each, they're all just three, four, five. So those are the considerations side, we'll take a look at it, I think from the. Intent purpose for the region, I don't have any real comments on that.
Anthony might just want to make sure that, and I appreciate some sidewalks, that the driveway is long enough to park a car and not impede.
It will be, yes, yeah, it will be.
You can't tell by the drawing.
Yeah, there's enough room to have that. One car in the garage. It's a double, it's a double driveway for the way that it was designed, you have two cars in separate units.
One car per unit, the driveway, one car per unit.
One car, yeah, each driveway can have one car, and then one car in the garage, and then there's about a hundred parking spots to be added. Without congesting all the roads. You know, with, you know.
So that's, but you're talking about that parking area that's totally.
There's like different, we, we kind of split it up with some, some parking along, you know, some of the street lanes here.
I think that becomes important because.
It kind of breaks it up in some spaces.
If it's that area towards the center, right, that you're letting take a huge load of the parking, it's kind of walkable.
We didn't want, I didn't want to slam in a lot of parking in here, because it's kind of like, as you're coming through, we kind of wanted to be like a freeway that. Kind of distract from, you know, the, the amount of buildings that will be in there.
Would you ask your affordable housing question?
I can't remember what we had talked about, I know it. I think I didn't ask, but I think maybe either.
Is, is the target of these considered?
The single panel hoes are still, they're still, you know, trying to figure out that portion of it, but they might be like a rentable patio home, they might sell.
Will they be parke? Or will they be considered affordable housing, how they're going to be thought?
It's probably gonna be on par for what you see in the area right now, what's going on on the, our side of town, south of Arlington area.
Are you taking into consideration the impacts that we're in charging capabilities?
Not at this moment, but we can definitely look into it.
Something, and we're seeing more and more of that, and obviously there's a centage towards it.
Yeah, I could talk to that about maybe, maybe something around the clubhouse for that. Not all the parking spots, but maybe one designated area.
Is, how, because these have garage, this, I mean, New York State Code will adopt that, I think Michigan. Where will that apply to this type of housing? It will, it's all.
What most developers are doing now is what I'm seeing is running the electric. Nobody knows what the universal charger is gonna wind up being, it's all gonna be the same amount of electricity. So they're all running it to most parking areas. Into your garage so that you can crack open a wall and get to it.
I think twenty-five, everything's covered. I have the power, I think it's sometimes.
I think both, no, I think both are doing it now already, but not, it's, it's not revealed in the garages, it's found in the wall. So my only comment, I wasn't here, Ron and Lambo, this is my first PUD since we've been in the board, right? So I just printed out the code, pretty much it meets all the requirements, basically except for the size, right?
Correct, we're at sixty-six acres. Yeah.
But other than that, the uses, I mean, it's all.
Yeah, everything is there, and then we're also conserving a little bit more than the twenty percent. We're over the, we're actually doing like the twenty acre minimum, or one hundred minimum, so we're trying to pick that spot there, so.
Scott, this is the first PUD in the town. In over thirty, maybe forty years. Uh, so it's not, you're not alone.
And the history is that main road is already in for our waterline. That's the connection that we're made from us up in Department.
Well, the road's not.
No, no.
No, that's. There, I mean, it's not the road, it's not there, but the.
If you look, if you, if you were to drive by now, you would see a dirt path, and basically it takes the, it takes the same, the main road takes the same route. As that new sixteen-inch waterline that is.
Is the waterline in now?
I believe most of it is. They're working on the power. I was like, they're, they were doing a sneak up on it, it's pretty, it's interesting.
So these are mostly quads, four unit.
There's uh, fifteen six units and fourteen eight units. The way that they're done, each of those driveways that you're seeing is a double driveway, so we're kind of splitting that party wall with the, with the garage.
So.
If you were to like, um.
Okay, I got you, uh, so you have eight units.
Yeah, there's eight and six.
Then I saw the driveways.
Anthony, are you gonna leave the lot lines?
The lot lines will be regenerated once we kind of get a feel for everything and then be adjusted to. There's a couple of things that need to be shifted.
Yeah, I think.
That's a general basic overview of what has, what is there now and what we have to shift and that will all get, there'd be a separate subdivision map that doesn't show anything. Um, just to kind of get a lot like the right spot that can follow to cover. So there'd be a lot wider, there'd be your own annexations and subdivision, there'd be a couple of different ways of moving some stuff around there.
And did you consider? Putting on, or I guess I forget what the answer was on. Say, on the Stella's parcel.
But the, we would be expanding, that would be an expansion of all the ponds, her ponds.
Well, she has. That's on her parcel.
I believe, I, I think it's, I don't know, that is gonna be, that is just like a preliminary line to be. Pull this off, she would have an easement to it, but we would be expanding that to take care of those areas. That was kind of where the town, when we were doing the preliminary growth, they have, but. They have that size ponds, we recreated that size right from that area, then we expanded upon it, just kind of using what's there, you know. And then, once we get into that, you know, to that point where we're designing, it'll be a little bit more detailed, obviously.
Okay, um. I hear what you're all saying, I will put together some sort of advisory report. On behalf and send it out to you guys like we typically do and. You can revise it as you see fit. We'll get it over to the town board and. I think for the most part. Uh, we agree that the, it's a spirit of. Town plan, what we're trying to do out there, certainly. To provide for more affordable housing. More than just big, single family homes.
Housing debt is affordable.
Okay.
As opposed to affordable house, that's what I believe the need for.
Correct. Uh, you, do you have sidewalks up on town line?
There's a, there's sidewalk on the other side of it. There's a, could be a cross.
I know there's sidewalk in front of the east and it runs, but I think it ends at your property line, so. Of course, that for an ancient.
I believe it comes, it's on the other side of the road, so there would have to be.
Maybe the other side of.
It's a little bit trapped, I think it is.
I believe there's.
On the other side.
So we would have to add a crosswalk there for, to get on the other side and then, then you're on the north side and you have sidewalk.
Don't want to get into the weeds too much, but.
Yeah, it's on the other side. Yes. Which we could connect into where that, where that.
Uh, all right, let me put that together and send that out to you guys and. We'll go from there, all right, thanks Anthony.
Yep, you're welcome, thank you very much.
All right. Okay. Here's Sam.
Last, it always has to be last. We do that so you, so you'll move this thing forward.
Yeah.
All right, we've got a request for an extension from Sal and Angelo for uh. Thirty five thirty five state route three sixty four. Their second ninety day extension expires, expired twenty second. They did get their request in for the extension before the expiration. They are requesting a third ninety day extension. And I guess I have to ask you, Sal, if you would tell us. What do you have left and how long will it take you to do it?
Uh, well, the first part I could definitely answer, the how long it'll take is up in the air. Um, you know, what we've been experiencing is the delay from the county. Uh, Department of Public Works, County Sewer District. Um, right, so, you know, when I came back, we got the approval last April. Came in for the first extension in October. And at that time, we had just gotten comments back from County Sewer District. Picking the letter, I put it was September, um, but I actually. I got the date wrong, they sent the first email saying they just had minor comments and we actually formally got the comments back in October. Um, so at that time, we had just received them and Brennan, you know, sent them out, I think the day or day before I came to that meeting. Uh, and then we didn't receive a response back until just last month in April. And at that time, they generally approved the revisions we made, but they also had additional comments in April, just last month. A year after we submitted the plans, they come up with new comments. So, we're working through that, the, the last comment now is about the uh, the berm of the stormwater pond and the. This would be like the northwest corner of the site. Um, the berm of the pond approaches into the uh, sewer easement. So, you know, we've kind of made the judgment call that. You know, based on the easement, I dug it back up in the abstract, says you can't put a permanent structure in the easement. But we were under the impression that the berm of a pond is just, you know, it's dirt and grass. That wouldn't be considered a permanent structure, so we put it there. And they didn't say anything about it in their September comments, we figured it was acceptable. Uh, but now, you know, a year after we submit plans for review, they have that comment, they want to see it moved. Brennan's still working on it, but I believe he was able to move it. Uh, you know, he has to, you know, when you update one thing in the plans, you gotta go through and update all the sheets, so. I know it's a lot of work for him, but uh, we were talking earlier today, he said he was able to make it work, he just had to reconfigure the pond a little bit. Um, I did reach out to uh, Tim McElliott. I reached out to him, well, right after we had that meeting, we met, it's another thing to uh, May seventh, so just last Tuesday. Um, myself, my dad Brennan, uh, Jim Fletcher, and then Jack Braun and Tim. We sat down and met and discussed all this at the county building and uh. Worked out a plan forward, you know, came up with a couple of possible solutions, so we reconfigured the pond, I think Brennan. Uh, figured that part out, so. Um, just hoping to have those tied up by the end of this week and then. You know, so as to when that is gonna be done. The county assured us that we're not gonna go to the back of the list again, that we're not, you know, we're not gonna wait another five months, but I mean. I can't in good faith tell you that I know exactly when it will be, hopefully it won't take long, but. Uh, you know, it's something that's out of our control, how fast they go, I know the county's understaffed right now. But um, you know, we're, we're the same situation we were the last time I was in here, where this is the last condition. That needs to be satisfied and it's. You know, we're in the same boat, I mean, the goalpost got moved a little bit since last time I was here, but. Um, you know, Brennan figured out a solution to that. Not approaching with the berm and the easement and uh. Once the county approves that, it should be good. And I'm just worried that if we. Don't approve the extension now and we have to start from the drawing board, now we have to go. Back to all of these county state departments and. We're probably gonna be in the same boat again, except, you know, two years from now, if it goes that route. And uh.
Is, is what these, these corrections are amendments, revisions you've made to the plans, are they going to. Affect the plans to the point that you have to go back to us anyway, because you moved lot lines?
No, lot lines have been. Uh, minor changes.
Removing the berm.
Oh, the stormwater pond, yeah, relocating away from the sewer easement. But the lot line's not changed.
That's a engineering code enforcement.
There was, there was a possible solution we came up with, moving the lot line, but we were able to uh. You know, satisfy the county's comments without moving the lot line, because we're trying to keep it minor.
Just, just so the board understands too, procedurally. What has yet to happen is obviously the conditions of, will have to be addressed. And then the plans have to be submitted for review and then ultimately signatures. In order to address the county's comments, if there are changes, those changes obviously have to be reviewed and approved by staff. And also determine whether or not they're substantial enough that warrants them to come back to the board. Because they're no longer potentially complying or substantially conforming in the words that are used to the preliminary overall. So that's, that's a process that would. That would have to be done as part of that review regardless. It would have to, any changes in the plan still have to be reviewed and signed to meet. Two things, one, the preliminary plans that they were approved on there, and then two, whether or not they meet the condition of rule, the final phase. Plans were approved on there, assuming both of those are substantially conforming to one another. Then, in theory, the plans would get signed.
That's the process, but not necessarily. It's not necessarily a substantial change, we just don't, you have no idea.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't know what changes, you know, are a result of the comments made. Obviously, they're working through those comments and then. The next step were them to appease and meet the county's comments, and then those plans would be forwarded to the town. To verify that they meet the playing boards and comments received and, and approved on. One of those reviews though, obviously has to be with the preliminary overall to make sure they're still conforming.
So the only pull up. Is the berm.
Correct, and then, you know, the implication of the moving the berm, Brennan had to. You know, re, reconfigure it a little bit to still maintain the same water quantity, quality thresholds.
So that's what I was gonna answer, understand there's a water problem on the property. Uh, the amount of water, I mean, maybe the property was miscalculated. And there's some, certainly the stormwater solution doesn't reach behind water that can bend the property. Uh, will change that would bring to that. Ah, impact then.
So I'm uh, I'll take that question, thank you. Yeah, so uh, I don't know if there's any misconception about the, the stormwater coming in out of the site now. And that the system facility is not being able to handle that. Uh, I think you guys are just, are talking about a, an issue with the uh. Uh, I, I expressed construction sequence that was done a little out of line during construction. That overflowed some temporary sediment traps during construction. Uh, that, that's not a, uh, that's not, those seven traps are not a permanent um, structure, those were there for. Uh, treated the, the stormwater during construction and the temporary divergent swells that were installed out of sequence. Um, were, are our temporary structure also. Um, the uh, getting into the weeds about the changes, and I can talk about a little bit more because we've been. Working on diligent the last three days, um, since we've gotten comments back from the county, um. There's two components to a stormwater facility, there's quality, there's quantity, right? Quantity is your intention, shapes and peaks off your hydrographs, so that you're not discharging at a higher rate than what you are existing, right? And then there's a quality component, which is in this case, a permanent pool of water that is held there. That is going to treat and reduce the amount of nutrients in the, in the stormwater before it discharges from the facility. So, uh, we had, don't have any issues with quantity, the pond was, was um. Oversized, as you said earlier, a different application, uh, so that we have the quantity that, that shaves that peak off of the uh. The storm events, and then there was the quality, the quality was the biggest one that was changed. Because we're mostly affecting is the permanent pool volume of the water by shifting the north from twenty five feet south. Um, so we had to compensate for the quality. Permanent pool volume, and we did that by increasing the depth of the pond and also making the sides. Slops of the pond a little bit steeper, below the safety bench, below the aquatic bench, where it's not gonna have any impact for safety of the public.
Lance, is that, does that align with your expectation, because when I go to the site now, the, the level of the pond seems to be above. But visually, it looks like it should be free, there was also erosion that's going into, what would be the east west running? Waterway, that's causing that, um, extra erosion goes into that, which indicates that erosion through that.
My, my, I believe to date, as I understand it to be with. The onsite erosion control issues that have been documented. And hence a stop work order issued by the town, is that, yeah, there was out of sequence events that have occurred. There has been some dialogue about whether or not calculations or drainage areas were correct, identified. Um, to date, there has been, at this point, there's still stop work order issued for the site. Um, they're still working through corrections, so I don't. Other than what was approved by this board, I don't have anything new to review to determine what's being done now. Is A, conforming to what was approved and, and designed that it was approved as. Or whether or not there's any changes in the drainage area that we have to otherwise consider as part of the review. Obviously, as part of the stop work order in the final approval of this phase one plan, prior to a signature, that has to be documented in return.
So I, I just want to be clear that when you said the drainage areas, and he was talking about erosion, sediment control, that. So the drainage areas that were in question were. Construction drainage areas for typical temporary settlement traps, they were not the permanent drainage areas that has to do with the pond sizing. That is what we calculate, and I could tell you that the drainage areas for the whole development will not change, the only thing that's changing is. The configuration of the pond itself, so.
That's my understanding as the lawyer who's been involved in this correspondence. Lance, can you confirm that that's your understanding, you're not swearing to it, but. That's.
Based on what I have to say, that's my understanding. That some of the, like, the issues that have been identified were. You know, the grading permit which they're operating under has a threshold disturbance of acts. And some of the measures implemented were to handle that disturbance area. During construction, that disturbance area increased. And some of the conveyance systems were altered in a manner due to forever the reasons may be. And during rain events caused potential um, issues with those mechanisms that they were designed to handle. I'm not saying, Mark, to your point, that that is the only issue out there. I'm not saying that Brennan's wrong or right, I'm just saying, based on the information I provided, I really don't have a way to determine if anything additional. Needs to be provided above what we've already proved.
And, and just some reassurance to the board, I know there's questions about erosion, so the developer's definitely taken it to heart. The erosion issues that were had, and if you look, if you drive by the site now, you see that most of it is covered in green grass. And he has been um, seeding it on a weekly basis to establish that vegetation across all the ground, so.
Brennan, do you have any ideas as to how long this will take to meet these conditions?
Um, yeah, I do, I, I. Honestly, uh, with the most recent back and forth with the county, I think we've gotten on their shortlist or, or. We've got their coattails so that they're, we're both riled up to get this thing done and they just want to be done with it.
Is their shortlist ninety days?
Okay, weeks to, to get a submission for them?
Uh, no, it's on my desk for review right now, I just gotta punch down through it, make sure it looks good.
He'll submit it to the county, they'll approve it quickly, and then what?
Uh, then.
No, then it's gotta get submitted to the town before review.
And we'll, in our, in our, in our point of view, we've satisfied all the conditions.
Like all the other conditions, have I reviewed easements? I don't even know, I don't remember.
Both of the conditions have been addressed, I think that's just the.
Maybe just go through your checklist to make sure, okay. So that once you get something to submit to the town, you're not unloaded and.
Well.
Chuck will.
Here's, here's our issue, uh. We do not. Rent third ninety day extensions. Uh, I think we've done one. One to ninety one. One for very extenuating circumstances. I don't want to get into a precedent of granting third extent, third, three, a third ninety day extension. That's why I keep asking you is, when do you think you can wrap this up? Because I would maybe ask the board to consider a sixty day extension. The thirty day.
I don't want to interrupt, don't with it, we're already thirty days, almost past when it expired. Cause it was, if you do a ninety day extension, it'll only be sixty something days from today.
If we could make it effective.
No, no.
Sixty days from today.
From the day that they cleared.
If we made it sixty days, if we made it south, we made it sixty days from today.
Okay.
Okay.
And that way you could tell your father you got the ninety day extension. And that way you could tell your father you got the ninety day extension.
Um, we have eighty something days, um.
The alternative process.
The alternative process is, uh, become null and void and restarted.
Restart the final plan.
Final plan, yeah, preliminary is out there, signed, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that was signed.
Oh, yeah, final plans will come back to this board.
Stage, phase one.
And approve.
Right, but that would, would, maybe I'm wrong, but I think that would reset the state county, you know, DOT, DOH.
It will most certainly impact permits and things that you've received.
It would be very costly. And time consuming for the developer, but not, but not. Cost prohibitive, which is another cost and time consuming. And it would put a burden on you and town staff to do something over again. If, you know, it's, you know, it is what it is, if you had to do it, you have to do it.
I do think it's important to at least state that there is the chance that the revisions being made. Could be perceived as being substantially, not substantially conforming to A, either the preliminary plans. Or the previous approval, which could then require it to come back to the board under that stance. That doesn't mean that you guys couldn't disagree with that, and there couldn't be a process for that as well. I'm just, I think it's important to at least identify that, even if you address the county's comments. There is that chance that those changes, cause there are changes, could result in a plan coming back to the board.
Who's calls?
That has, that's a.
I think, yeah, they have to kind of define the substantial, right? We're not moving any lot lines, we're not moving any structures, we're not moving the road, you know, we're doing some minor grading changes.
I think, I think if, if it was me, I would suggest that as you were, and maybe you're already doing this, but. As you submit to the county, you're submitting your ideas and the plans to the town court for it's an officer. And, and maybe there's a way to accommodate two things at once.
Yeah, wasn't that, we've been trying to keep Jim Fletcher tight the loop on this too, cause.
Understand.
I think he's, uh.
And I, I'm, I'm not saying the town's even in a position to review them at this point either, but. It may make sense before you make a suggestion to appease one that you really look at whether or not you're still. I mean, and Brennan, I know.
Well, we've got to do, we've got to do the piece of county, I mean, we're, we're in the details right now. This is every, every development, you work through the detail.
But we just wish.
Is this a single stop? That's, um, that's, I've never been multiple stop.
It's, my understanding is it's, it's.
The same one.
One, it's one that was issued three months ago, five months ago.
Yeah, no.
They're allowed to be doing some work on the site to implement remedial measures and stabilization.
Only thing allowed during the stop order was getting it complied with. Erosion and sediment control issues that were identified in SWPS, there will be the SWPS inspection reports. To comply, I think at one point DC had some comments that you had to address to comply with. And then since then, to my knowledge, there hasn't been any work, the town hasn't, hasn't issued the. Or removed the stop order due to a number of things that we are waiting for, one of which is something that Brennan's been working on.
Okay. So getting back to this, uh, extension, uh. Sixty days, uh. From today. I, I guess, I'll make a motion that we. Grant, uh, the applicant a sixty day extension. Not a ninety days, so we're not breaking our precedent.
Good, about eighty-nine.
And expired whenever sixty days from tonight.
It says July thirteen twenty twenty-four.
Sixteen days, so you lose eight days.
And Chuck usually say this is the last one. And for no other reason, you can take that to the county and say, well, you got it, but it's not right enough. I'll second that motion.
It's okay. So, Lance, uh, further discussion.
I, I just, I guess we'll find out one more.
I think there's been a number of. Expectations that.
Mark, can you speak up?
I think the intent was, the intent of this board ruling was followed in the process, so. But I voiced that.
Well, we got to separate what's happening in the field. From what our, our obligations are as far as playing board and reading plans and. And, you know, we've got to track the plan and make sure. It complies with our code in terms of site plans and subdivisions and all that. What's happening in the field with dirt being turned and all that, that's something that staff takes care of, enforcement and. Um, MRB, so.
So, so who's responsible for solving the stormwater issue? On that, I mean, it, it, it sounds like there is a, the expert, there's a higher education involved that can tell you the problems. Expected, so engineers, I am one of them, God bless us, got it on. So I'm wanting to.
No, I.
That would be, it was reviewed by the town chair also.
What, so I think what happened is just my understanding. Um, and Lance and Brennan corrected that, but I think. Brennan got the right amount of water coming out of the site. And then the stormwater and erosion control measures were installed in the wrong sequence. At which point, there's more water than was expected or, uh, at, there was capacity for it to came. But, that's different than. The wrong, the, the num, the amount of water coming on the site was misguided.
Sorry, I didn't consistently put on that, I mentioned that we estimated what was on the day, about fifty of the water and not just four of them. And that, I mean, that's just, that's, that's input that I've received from different conversations, that.
Okay.
It wasn't estimating properly, it, I, I mean, there's a number of questions, I just wanted to get the questions getting through. That it gets designed right so that we don't have, I, I want to see it develop and happen at this point, right? I want to see that for the better time, for the community to show. But I'm also still concerned about how the waters can decide. And where it goes shoot after it is there, you can see erosion is happening, you can go to that. Maybe the property now, and then when it goes down through, we haven't had a heavy frame here for sure.
So, the only thing that I can add is I can't validate whether or not the drainage areas that were provided. Are incorrect based on the information that I currently have in my possession today. I've heard similar, similar thoughts provided by people who've done some level of, um. You know, inspection or calculation, none of which has been provided to us. So I, I can't confirm any of that. Uh, what I can confirm is that upon receipt of whatever the next submission of plans are. That we're obligated to review, that, that's something that we have to look at. And that's ultimately something that we have to validate that. One, do we agree with everything that's been provided prior to us stamping our, our signing our name to the design plans that have been provided?
So one of the things they'll tell you on extensions, usually why I tell you to all forgot safety tissue or a pair or a bit or a tenth extension. Is if the circumstances haven't changed, they've never issued a fifth or a tenth. Um, there's no reason to make everybody go through, but if there's a concern or. An outstanding issue that circumstances have changed. Then you should not grant the extension, it's not to say they can't. Granted next month, but if you don't have the information you need. Don't take action. It's already expired, it'll be issued tonight or. With more, it's up to you. Circumstances. Changed, or, you know, you need to be satisfied that circumstances haven't changed with the existing approval.
Um, we have heard response, we heard any response to the town since, um, after we responded to the stop work order.
At this point, the town is, I, to my knowledge.
Kind of in the dark here, this is some new information coming out from the planning board here, so.
The information is new around the stormwater management and the assessment of, was it?
The, the volume calculations, I, I was just, and I'm not even sure which volume calculations we're talking about, but. Don't need to get into that, um. But I would just, yeah, leave it up to the board to see, you know. To do with the, they have a motion on the table, I should probably just shut up.
Yep. There's a motion on the table, uh. Did I get a second? Uh, I think we've discussed it enough. Does everybody understand the motion? It's for a sixty day.
Days, July thirteenth.
Uh, I think tonight and to July fifteenth to meet the conditions of approval of the final. And if during the course of seeing if those conditions are being met. You find there's something that's threw this thing all out of whack, then, you know, when that sixty days are up, that's when. Create a problem where, you know, we're done, guys, we, we've got to move on to some of these. So, all right, got a motion, a second, hold favor.
Aye.
Post. Hey, let the record show, it was four to one.
Thank you, oh, I should call the secretary.
Thank you, guys, uh, hopefully we won't see you again.
Hopefully we'll see you out for a drink sometime.
All right, uh, we got another extension request, uh.
You need anything?
All right, yeah.
From, uh. Mark's engineering representative, Walter Curry. It's property on fifty, fifty-one, County Route sixteen. Uh, this is a second ninety day extension on a overall preliminary. Site plan, she recalled the property, it had three lots, uh, two little lots. And homes, you see homes coming down and new homes being built. And we're pushing toward a final plan. For the two lots that involve the two new homes. And you, the reason for your extension request?
We got, uh, held up about four months requiring a variance for the private garage, which exceeded nine hundred square feet. After preliminary.
Held up is the word I've used, but.
That's gonna say, who held you up?
Well, we, we submitted their finals for approval, but we couldn't, they couldn't act on them because of the variance.
So we're over that hurdle.
Very expensive.
Very expensive, okay. And I know from PRC the other day that it sounds like things are moving along and. Do you think within this next extension period, you can have everything wrapped up in it, right?
Yes.
It could, yeah, I mean, you're set, right?
Right now, I believe, as I understand, the conditions are still left.
I need to write a letter, and that's it.
An approval letter and the easements have to be filed.
And there was a lot of adjustments.
Well, I'm just messing.
And he signed it, we just filed it. Yeah, that was a little bit, I thought that was a lot of, a lot of order, but that's fine, they take care of it. I'm not, I'm fine.
You can't even calculate the water coming out of the site already. Uh, they, they've been working with this very. You just took me past ninety minutes.
Your alarm went off. Nine o'clock, uh, okay, anybody have any problems?
How long do, how long do you extend?
Ninety days, second ninety day, second and final, second and final.
Is it, or did we give a sixty?
Information, they've submitted their application for final approval, is that accurate?
Correct.
So you'll see them for final approval next month for the second meeting this.
June.
I sent it, but I didn't.
June twenty-sixth, something like that.
So, at which point there exists, this extension will be.
Look, we won't publish. We all have a, a preliminary straightaway by June twenty-sixth, I said, so.
Don't publish, you have the goods.
It's anticipated that the filing of the easements and the filing of the lot line adjustment will satisfy the conditions and therefore we should be decided. Plans have been provided, it's just a matter of we can't sign until those things have been filed.
Yeah, I'll move to. Ninety days, ninety day extension. Mark has a motion by Scott, now, second by Mark. For discussion, hold favor.
Aye.
Okay, so the on twenty-sixth, wrap this up, up June. Okay, uh. I sent to you, good people, a memo from Sarah. On behalf of the open space project team. Uh, hopefully you got to read it, uh, she would like to send that. Uh, one to the town board. On behalf of the, uh, open, open space project team, the ECB, planning board. Uh, stipulating the statements she made in. Memo, uh, requesting that the board seriously pursue lands along the Barnes Gully. As well as the lake front, in front of R S M. And.
Don't have a problem with it.
No.
Uh, favor.
It has been submitted and will appear on. I mean, it's been submitted to the next town board agenda.
Oh.
It's not been published yet, but it should be on the May twenty.
Assuming, we have a consensus tonight, I will notify Sarah that we had no problems with it, certainly moved our name. As a co-sponsor. Yeah, Sarah, uh, the, 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 the team outlined the reasons. All good reasons was. Is this part of the roads property?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Oh, it is.
Sarah said it could be, or it could be some of the other processes.
Yeah, yeah, there's another way to skin the cat, I guess.
Yes, I don't know, there's no looking to throw.
There's other.
Okay, so, uh, I will let Sarah know that, uh, we agree with the memo as written. And, okay, I will do that.
When, remember, is it June tenth we meet with the town board?
Yes.
June tenth.
Yep.
Yeah.
And it looks like we may not have a June eleventh plan with me.
Really, I, for the record, if there is a meeting, I will not be in attendance.
Okay.
On June eleventh.
June fourth, I will not be here. June, I'll send you in. Right, June, June eleventh is our scheduled meetings, June fourth, I'm here.
No.
No.
Second.
Our meetings are the other week, the eleventh of.
But it's good to know you won't be.
Right, I will be here the fourth.
Not available that day?
Not available, June fourth.
It does that auto thing.
Either you guys didn't continue anything till the eleventh, and currently there's no applicant scheduled for eleven.
How is that possible?
But there, there was a lot they got. What you have to call June tenth.
Tenth is our.
Yes, is the town board.
Yep.
I got a few.
Yeah.
I have a couple. I, Jared, Jared made it sound like she's going to have, uh. Uh, what's this?
That's what you're saying, I'm sorry.
Uh, MRB.
I'm at, June tenth.
Matt Horn, yeah, but Matt Horn is going to be a facilitator.
Honestly, me, but I, I'll be going back from.
Not pretty good, and. Uh, other than that, I, I, I guess he's gonna try to prod us to. Take it for a reason.
I think some information is coming in.
Hmm, okay.
Nothing.
How, Matt?
Looks maybe like a survey type thing, I believe he's working on to provide some feedback towards some of the procedures of process. I really don't know enough about it to talk about it, I'm making some of this up right now, but. That's my, that's my, that's my understanding that some level of survey.
This is how favorite, are you guys moving?
Are we moving? Um, the plan is to, but it's not quite official yet, like, it's not. There's still the potential to not move, so. We've been told that we're hoping by April, the new, in the consolidation.
Well, speaking of MRB news, who's back in town? Lance, tell, tell us who's back in town.
Oh, Eric Cooper. Um, so Eric Cooper. Left from uh the town planner position, went to Niagara Falls, took over, I think. I don't know titles, but I think he was like the director of planning over there. And then he moved to South Carolina, applied for an MRB position. There was hired as planner. At our South Carolina office. And then I think just due to logistics and and what whatnot, he moved back to Rochester area. Now works in under in my department. Um, so I've been trying to implement him more with the town of Canavera for a number of reasons. Um, so you might be seeing him in the future to come to some board meetings.
This.
Or assisting with different things.
But Lance is trying to get out of coming to meetings.
Oh, no.
You guys will talk. I already know you guys won't chew Eric Cooper up and spit him out in your little faces.
Delegation, right, Lance? It's called delegation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Giving him an opportunity to get to.
Okay, guys, just keep an eye out for training opportunities. There's. There's a learn at lunch, so.
I'm gonna be gone.
Oh, can't can't do it. Okay. Uh, well, for anybody else wants to take it. And there's also, they just announced a uh for a form-based code.
Yep.
Learn at lunch.
Federation will set check, sorry.
This is the federation.
And then you have the uh boot camp.
Once a month, right?
Once a month, yeah. So. Still got your hours? Anybody else?
If you resend that, I'll.
So, oh, through the minutes.
Yes, Mark. For the edification, I believe there's, um, I shared this with Bob and Chuck. I knew I was probably vulnerable myself for more of it. Um, New York State's just putting like a ton of money into, um. Alternative energies, I guess it's kind of the way to see it, but more about green building and some of those things. Uh, things that we should decide if we want to start. What I asked, uh, no, we got a response. I don't know if that because we're not supposed to talk previously. Um, uh, I think, Bob, I could certainly infer, but, um. When we should be looking at something to introduce this code and how we do that as a board, right? Cause it's.
Yeah, it's real simply, put your thoughts down on a piece of paper and. See what our code says now and where, if it doesn't, how would, how we could fit it in. And then we just write it, write the code.
Um. We reviewed it here.
We reviewed it here amongst ourselves. And then if we get a, okay, then you take it to the town manager or supervisor. And then we go from there. Yeah, it's, uh. Yeah, I mean, it's not easy. I mean, it takes a lot of them.
Yeah, it's it's interesting to watch. There's a lot of this stuff is picking up and. And it's like they'll have the policies that picks up. Um, so to hopefully they, hopefully they make their life easier and I don't have to write it.
Yeah. And when we talk about geothermal and things like that. Yeah, gray water. Uh, is another one. When Piper tried to build my house here, they didn't even want to talk about it. As a subsystem. Maybe we. That would be another problem, saving the water.
Yeah, okay, it sounds like we got another project team. Cool. Well, you you're gonna sort of hold your ED.
Yeah, you know.
In with it. It's all all together. It's just.
It makes me sound bigger than a tree under your jacket. No, I'm not.
What's wrong with that? I don't, I don't. I would be. I would be.
You look like a gypsy.
Oh, but I'm not a tree.
Uh, if you do want to propose some code, let me help write it.
Yeah, of course.
Um, that way it's sort of the way.
I'm pretty good at delegating, so I mean, I'm looking for help. How's that?
Yeah. I would say this time, what you want, let me know and I'll make.
I would say keep it great.
Keep it, keep it open. Also, if we're gonna propose cut legislation, I think we should. Uh, have letters that stand for stuff like. Going really. Eco.
Oh, you aren't.
Oh, buzzing.
You on acronym.
Right.
Yeah.
That's a good idea. All right, don't you have some sort of a?
Well, it would be.
Didn't have to say that, you know, we're certain.
You have approved the Minnesota, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, I wasn't here, but I read, so I'm not gonna make.
I'll I'll move to acceptable minutes today.
Thank you for bringing that up.
All in favor?
Oh, I.
I, I was, I read them. I was not here.
What else did I miss?
For the record.
Anything?
You're sure? Do we have a surety release?
No, that's next week. Okay, next time.
For.
Surety, you have a surety next, yep, twenty eighth.
Yeah, that's for the.
Just came.
Same family homes.
Yeah.
Ready, set.
Ready, set, go.
Motion adjourned at nine fifteen.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Bye.
Hi, Mark.
Karina, I hope you're feeling.